Good morning, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. We respectfully acknowledge that the County of Halliburton is located on Treaty 20 Michisogi territory and in the traditional territory of the Michisogi and Chipewa nations, collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations. We acknowledge the shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original indigenous inhabitants as stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. We are going to be making some shuffling of the agenda. So we will be moving after adopting the agenda and declaration, or I guess after the minutes, we'll be moving into the election of deputy warden and then right into the budget discussion and then back to the regular agenda. So could I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda as amended? Councillors Burton and Fearing?
Be resolved that the January 24th, 2024 Halliburton County Council agenda be approved as amended.
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof today? Counselor Dayu?
Thank you, Warden. I have a pecuniary interest in the matter of short-term rentals. It's Agenda Item N1, as my family owns a tourist establishment in the region.
Thank you. Could I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the minutes of January the 10th? Councillors McKechnie and Shell?
Be it resolved that the minutes from the January 10th, 2024 meeting of Halliburton County Council be adopted as circulated.
All in favor? That's carried. We will now move to the election of the deputy warden. Would you move with you?
Deputy Clerk will assist us.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, we will, we have two candidates for deputy warden. Councillors Burton and Carter. If either the candidates would like to speak to council, we'll start with councillor Carter.
Thank you. As we move on from the the short-term rentals, which hopefully will be passed very shortly, we do have a number of issues that are outstanding and need to have some focus. And those really are, in no order of importance, transportation, the housing, and the healthcare file. These are all files that I have been up to speed on and have been working in and want to work more on. And I think those are going to be the big challenges for the county in the in the in the upcoming period and certainly before the end of this term. So I would like to, you know, start getting more involved in this and working as deputy warden and being able to be in a position to step in to fill, fill the gap whenever that may, may come, like we had this past week with the scheduling change that the provincial government threw at us. I think that that those are the important areas that I want to work on. I want to focus on as well as keeping our finances as controlled as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Burton.
Thank you. I'm just going to say that I do feel we have a lot to do and that we have finished up from things that we have been doing in the past five years. And I'm really looking forward to getting some of that, I'll say, put to bed. I'm very willing with with all the projects we have on the go to, to help in any which way. And I'd like us just to move forward together as a team.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll conduct the vote. The ballots are in the the ante room. And starting the councillor Dowell will proceed into to do, excuse me, to do the vote.
And if if I think that if either candidate wishes to have a scrutineer, that that's their choice.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you. After counting all the cast ballots, it's my pleasure to announce that councillor Burton has been elected deputy warden.
Congratulations, councillor Burton.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. Congratulations, councillor Burton.
I, Dave Burton, haven't been elected to the office of deputy warden of the county of the corporation of the County of Halliburton to solemnly and promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true alliance to His Majesty, King Charles III. And I make this only promise and declaration conscientiously believing that it to be true and knowing that is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
And do we have a resolution? Yeah, yeah, we do. It's okay. It's out of order because we changed the agenda. Could I have a mover and a seconder to pass the resolution, please? Deputy Mayor Dayu, seconded by councillor McKechnie.
Be resolved that Halliburton County Council elect councillor Dave Burton as deputy warden of County of Halliburton and the staff be directed to the story of the paper ballots for the 2024 deputy wardens election.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. So we will now move to item. Our. Our numbering system is a little bit different here, so into budget deliberations. And welcome to our directive.
Good morning, Warden and councillor.
Oh, okay. Over to the CAO.
Thank you. Thank you, Warren Danielson. And I just want to thank it's my pleasure to present my first budget as the as the new CEO for the County of Halliburton. And I think it'd be important for me to recognize the how easy it was coming in here with the great work that Mike Redder had done before me. So it was actually one of the smoothest transitions I've had going into new jobs. So I just want to thank Mike for the great job he did in getting us ready to for in a short timeframe, getting the budget ready for this year. So it's appreciated. I think it's important going into today is that with respect to where we are with the budget and the thing areas we're faced going forward, it's a little bit different than in previous years because a lot of things have changed over the province and the country last little while. And so in putting this budget together, both the operating capital budget staff has been working over the past several months and putting the budget together to identify specific areas of growth, but growth that are necessary to sustain our existing level of service. But also growth areas, I think we're going to advance level of service as well. And also, more importantly, how we're going to address the future capital investment needs we need across the county with respects to roads, bridges, and other things of that nature, but also on the operational side, as well as how we evolve the operations of the municipality to meet up with the new demands and regulations we're facing going forward. One of the biggest challenges going into the budget this year was unprecedented inflation rates over the last few years. And it's interesting because while CPI or the general inflation rates are coming down, things that we purchased generally aren't, don't fall into that category. There's a municipal price index that we were faced with things like materials. We we buy gasoline, things of that nature that outstrip the normal rates of inflation. Some of them upwards of sixteen to eighteen, twenty percent rates of inflation on those goods. And they're they're make it quite difficult for us to move forth for budget. And that's been accounted for, but also specifically identified within a package you have in presented to you today to identify how those are impacting just our core level of services, not like doing anything new, but just doing our core level of services with the impact of the inflation. And as we went, as we're going forward right now, is that it's very important for us to look at how we what makes up the budget and how we go forward with the budget. So what we've done, there's a, we've developed a new format this year, which is takes the budget away from reading spreadsheets and reading financial documents, take it more in a textual form whereby we've tried to in a more narrative way, explain the different components of the budget and how we're looking to address. It was how we're going forward, a little more graphical in nature. So because the whole goal of the budget is the most, one of the most important things, if not the most important thing we do on any given cycle, is making sure that everybody understands what we're talking about, getting away from accountant, accountant terminology, getting away from jargon or acronyms that are specific to a certain area and try to break it into a document that not only council, staff, but all the members of public can actually clearly understand where we're going and why we're going there. So that's the the focus we have going forward as well. And also, we, as I did mention before, is the the budget, the briefing summary is the most, is the most, the clearest change we've made. And that's why the purpose of this document, it's not meant to replace the budget, but this is like a reference tool for both council and staff and, excuse me, and members of the public to follow along when we get into more detailed discussions on various components of the budget, little background information of what's in there, why we're going forward. And Andrew will go into a lot more detail on this than 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 I am right now. But we've broken it down into into four base overarching themes. And it's, which I talked before, is the base level, things we had to adjust of the base level services to move forward with their current level of service, pre-approvals from council, anything that was done in a previous year, mid-budget, whichever, that's as a carryover effect into this year's budget. Catch-up items, which deals with funding, funding level gaps. We've had decreases in government funding levels over the last year, which will impact core core services as well or pieces going forward. And then just straight growth items, growth items that are, and these are the ones that will be new or relatively new to the budget that we feel are important to advance goals and objectives of council or things that we feel we need to go forward to keep the the county being progressive in nature. We are also looking at dealing with things around capital budget forecasting. We're in, there'll be an introduction of a new idea or new mechanism within this year's budget to do just that. Is how do we plan going forward for our capital adjustment piece as well with respect? So so we can have, can mitigate any spikes in the tax rate or spikes in spending increases over time. So you have a very gentle line on your tax rate versus having big spikes when you go into certain years because certain approaches come online through either through the asset management plan, emergency or things of that nature, setting yourself, developing to some strong financial or fiscal planning for the for the county going forward. And I think the last thing, it's, I think it's important, is that when we're looking at work functioning in a municipality now, as we go, have gone through time, it becomes more and more difficult for municipal level, both at the county level and at the local municipal level, and meet our financial obligations. We're we're saddled with an antiquated form of of revenue collection with respect to the property taxes. It's a regressive tax that has no bearing on people's ability to pay. It's it's an asset you happen to own. If you own it for 50 years, if, you know, your income may not, or probably did not grow as much as the asset you currently have. And that creates a problem or a balancing that we must have because as we understand the needs to go forward with certain things, we also have to have a full understanding as the the true impact that has on the people that either live within our communities or work within our communities as well. And so that's kind of the balancing act. And so one of the things we've, we've done this year is we've had a true focus towards prioritization of spending within the budget. There's a lot of things that that we haven't either had in the budget or like to have in the budget. But from prioritization standpoint, there are other things that need that have, that need to be done now versus later. And so that's kind of the balance we have. It's not that we're abandoning certain things. It's just that we're actually predicting when that spending happens or where it happens in as part of our recommendations going forward. And the reason I think this is important, as I mentioned before about the, with our legislative reliance on the property taxes in an area like the County of Halliburton, where we have such a large influx of people on a seasonal basis and a lot of longstanding residents who's is that, who's have, excuse me, have experienced a large assessment growth on their property. These things have been very important when we talk about adding new spending to the budget or reevaluating where we're spending existing money. So as we go through the presentation today, we've tried very hard to actually re-spend existing money prior to asking for new money. And so as Andrew will explain in our presentation, some of the asks, they're actually mitigated by readjustments of spending, the areas of spending throughout the budget. So we're actually netting out to quite a bit less than what the gross amount of the spend would be, and we'll walk through it. I think that's important going forward. And lastly, I'd like to say this is this new program or new focus we have, however presenting the budget, is the first step of a new financial management framework we're going to bring forward to the county. And there'll be subsequent reports coming to county in the next, county council in the next couple of months. The first step being coming out of this this budget cycle, when we have the council's approval as to where we're going to spend the money and what the project should be going forward, we will develop an integrated work plan program whereby we will track and report back to council on what was in the budget, how it's going forward. But more importantly, from an integrated standpoint, it allows us to show that a spending or a project here actually has a horizontal impact across the organization where it may be a public works project, but it requires resources from IT, requires resources from another department and how they're impacted. So we can properly plan out as we go forward, not only the fiscal resources of the municipality, more importantly, the human resources of the county going forward to ensure that we have the resources to do what we say we're going to do in a, in a game, in a game from timeframe. Those work plans will then be put into monthly reports that come into council, come to council in a more consolidated fashion where you're going to get one operational summary report that will come forward that will deal with all areas of the department, but will also tie back into the budget. And as we move forward with respect to strategic planning process, it will also tie back into the strategic initiatives or basically the direction council has given us over the period of things council wants to see accomplished within other calendar year over, or, excuse me, or over multiple years. And the last part is, the goal is as we move forward over the next two, three years, is we'll able, able to morph this program into what is essentially a business planning program for the county in the sense that we're not looking at what we're doing today. We're actually going to start looking at what we're doing five years from today and four years from today. And as we get more established and as we move forward, we're also going to start tying in key performance indicators on each one of these elements. So we're going to grade ourselves as in, did we achieve it in full or in part? If not, why not? And if so, what worked well as we went forward? And all this information we reported on a quarterly, monthly and quarterly basis to council and to members of the public. So we're taking, really opening the lens on the budget and our spending process, but also our efficiency in spending the money. The, in a certain sense, one of the easiest ways, easiest things to do is actually collect it. It's what, how are we doing as we spend it? How effective are we spending going forward? And so that's how we're going to be going forward with this as well. And there's a couple of other ideas or recommendations that you'll see in here that we're looking for council consider to help move this process forward. So with that, your worship, I'll turn it up to you and Ms. Robinson.
Good morning, Mrs. Robinson.
Good morning, Warden and council. If you can get the presentation up on the slides. I'm happy to be the one presenting the 2024 budget this morning on behalf of the entire senior management team.
Could you move your microphone just a little bit closer?
Sure. Okay. As you've seen by now, staff have been working hard on updating the county's budget process and documentation. As the CAO mentioned, this is to enhance our level of information sharing, understanding and clarity for both council and the members of public. Today's presentation will be coming primarily from myself and the CAO with the directors available to answer, answer any department-specific questions that any of you may have. The CAO, sorry, no, not. The CAO has already spoke to the new process that the directors were tasked with, with developing their budgets. the C the C A O uh has already spoke to the new process that the directors uh were tasked with with developing their budgets. Um, the four groups of base level adjustments, a catch up or one time items, pre approvals of council um and the new growth items. You're receiving the first draft today of of the budget and all further updates will come to regular scheduled council meetings uh until a council is um comfortable with adoption, which will hopefully take place in February or March. Next slide, please. Uh, staff have prepared their budgets based on council's identified projects and priorities along with staff's understanding of council's expectations combined with their departmental planning reports. The development of the twenty twenty four draft budget has not been an easy one for staff. The economic and fiscal impacts from various sources have created significant operating budget pressures. Staff have utilized various strategies, uh as the C A O has mentioned, to try to mitigate these impacts to maintain existing operational service levels. The draft budget uh presented today includes a levy requirement of twenty three million six hundred and twenty one thousand two hundred and sixty four dollars. This is an increase of two million thirty six thousand six hundred and ninety four dollars from twenty twenty three and would be an additional cost of eighteen dollars and forty one cents per hundred dollars per hundred thousand dollars of residential assessment for the rate pair. This levy increase uh has been aided by one point five four percent growth in assessment. Next slide. This slide provides council the breakdown of the levy increase uh by division with the majority of the increases being seen in transportation and general administration. Next slide. Inflation increases account for four hundred and seventy four thousand dollars or approximately twenty three percent of the total levy increase. Inflation increases in operational materials, supplies and premiums account for a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars of that total. Capital roads construction uh for a hundred and sixty seven thousand of that total and a hundred and eighty thousand are inflationary increases to our transfers to other entities. Next slide. Wages and benefits account uh for the county's largest operating expense. Wage and benefit increases represent five hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars of the levy increase. This includes all staff represented by two Q P locals and a non-union and management group. These increases incorporate the recent settlement with local four four three five and the anticipated settlement with nineteen sixty. It is uh past practice for all non-union and management staff uh to receive the same compensation increases as our local nineteen sixty. We did also see uh in our statutory payroll deductions uh increases in C P P and W S I V along with three the three point nine percent benefit premium increase as presented to council earlier this month. Materials and supplies is the county's next largest operational expense with the majority of increases um being identified within the inflationary numbers on the previous slide. Materials and supplies category also includes such things as uh building expenses like heat, hydro and internet. Uh operational vehicle costs as such as fuel, maintenance and repair parts also includes programming, training uh and insurance premiums. The county spends approximately one point one four million on operating contracted services. Contracted services that would fall within um this category include legal, accounting and consultant services. Roads maintenance contractors such as uh roadside mowing or line painting as well as other contracts related to the delivery of various programs within the county. Debt repayment noted in this graph includes both the premium and the uh interest expenses. And I did also want to note on this slide uh that although amortization is budgeted for as an operating expense, it does not impact the levy and is strictly an internal accounting requirement through P S A. Uh, next slide, please. I know this one is hard to read, but this is the overall picture um of the twenty twenty four draft budget summarized by division. Next slide, please. Included in the twenty twenty four budget is just over five point three seven million dollars to be transferred to other entities. This is an increase of five hundred and forty four thousand dollars from twenty twenty three. A hundred and eighty thousand of this increase has already been uh recognized within the inflationary numbers. A further two hundred and six thousand are pre approvals, which include the funding to triple H S for the C T machine and the increase uh in audit fees for the library. The remaining hundred and fifty seven thousand dollar increase is related to growth items for both uh City of Cortha Lakes and uh the Halliburton County Public Library. Library expenditures, net of revenues included in the county's twenty twenty four draft budget total approximately one point three million dollars, including uh inflationary items, pre approvals and growth. This is a ninety one thousand uh or seven point four three percent increase over twenty twenty three. Since finalizing the data for a budget summary, the library board has requested an additional seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars be added to the budget. This amount is not included in the numbers being reported today, uh and if directed by council, we will include in the second draft of the budget. I have uh included library as a non-discretionary funding item on this chart, but want to note uh that though council is required to fund the library, council has the discretion on the amount of funding they provide unlike the other non-discretionary groups identified on this slide. Andrea Brown uh is here and will be providing council with um a specific library budget presentation following mine. Next slide, please. The uh county currently has three active debenture payments. Two thousand and fifteen, one point seven two five million was borrowed over a twenty year term for the construction of the Mindana uh ambulance base. Twenty twenty, three million was borrowed for a a ten year term for three uh roads construction projects. And twenty twenty two, four point one five two million was borrowed for a ten year term for the completion of five structure projects as identified on this slide. The total debt repayment budget for twenty twenty four excluding interest is seven hundred and ninety six thousand dollars. The county's maximum annual repayment limit set within the debt policy is fifteen percent of the county's net revenues and based on twenty twenty three numbers, uh this equates to just over uh three million dollars. Next slide, please. It's a summary of our revenues. Under the uh municipal act, the county is required to prepare a balanced budget where revenues equal expenses. Total revenue to match the just over thirty three million dollars in spending is summarized on this slide. Property taxes are the most significant source of funding for the county and will account for twenty three point six million of the total budgeted revenue for twenty twenty four. Funding from upper upper levels of government is the next source of revenue. Um, although we have seen a slight increase overall in twenty twenty four of just over two hundred and two thousand, uh which is mainly due to the land ambulance uh funding increases. There are some decreases that I want to note for council. The O M P F funding continues to be phased out. We saw a decrease of twenty two thousand two hundred dollars uh for twenty twenty four, and it's anticipated that this will be the final year uh which would be a loss of a hundred and twenty six thousand three hundred dollars in twenty twenty five. O C I F funding continues to be decreased year over year with the county seeing a fifteen percent decrease in twenty twenty three and in twenty twenty four, receiving six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in twenty twenty two to four hundred and fifty five thousand in twenty twenty four. Municipal uh funding are the recover recoveries for services and or purchases made on the locals behalf. Uh, this is mainly in our I T and public works departments. User charges are based on the county's tariff of fees by law, which is reviewed at a minimum annually by staff to make any required inflationary or program related adjustments. Uh, next slide, please. Staff have identified any enhanced service levels, new programs or funding required due to growth by placing these items in the in the growth column in the budget. The total amount included in the draft budget for growth items is seven hundred and twenty four thousand dollars of expenses, which is offset by increased funding of eight hundred and sixty four thousand dollars for a net negative impact of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. A total of six hundred and eighty six thousand dollars of the increased revenue is allocated to the land ambulance and community paramedic programs. The balance of the increased growth revenue is due to increased municipal recoveries, user fees, investment income and the Canada Community Build Fund. A total of four hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars of capital expenditure growth has been budgeted for in twenty twenty four. Improvements to public works patrol yards uh and vehicles and equipment for health services make up three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars uh with the remaining seventy three thousand being a fence project for the Prentice Street location and hardware and software purchases. This growth is offset by transfers from reserve in amount of three hundred and seventy six thousand dollars, resulting in a net capital growth expenditure of fifty two thousand dollars. There's a net budget impact of a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars of growth to transfers to others. The majority of this, a hundred and forty two thousand is related to the social services and housing transfer to the city of Cortha Lakes. And forty thousand is the net levy growth request from the library, which is related to additional staffing hours and the opening of the Dorset branch. We've also seen a decrease uh in our enrollment in the Health Professional Recruitment Incentive Program. Uh, so therefore we have decreased this program contribution by twenty five thousand dollars. Next slide, please. The operating expenditure growth of five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars represents seventy one percent of the total growth expenses included in the draft budget. Forty six percent of that or approximately two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars uh is for increased legal expenses for such things as O L T hearings, short term rental, mat tax and land transfers. Also included with this is a council strat plan, asset management plan update, a newer enhanced programming and health recruitment and community climate action plan. The remaining three hundred and twenty thousand is for the implementation of new positions. After careful review of the county's current staffing levels, gaps have been identified. With some reorganization of current positions, staff have been able to include four new positions budgeted for twelve months with a twenty twenty four levy impact of thirty eight thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, which equates to seven percent of the overall operating operating expenditure growth. An engineering tech position was removed uh from the twenty twenty three budget and has been added back in. This position will be responsible for supporting uh capital projects, long term forecasting, managing roads and structures inventory, maintenance and capital requirements and priorities. They will also support the legislated asset management plan update and ongoing maintenance of the county's asset management plan. The vacancy of this position uh has negatively impacted the department's operational, sorry, the department's operations with the remaining staff having to perform additional duties affecting department deliverables being delayed and or not completed. The second uh position is an administrative assistant position uh to support the C A O, council, clerk and human resource departments. There's a distinct shortage of administrative support across the organization. The lack of support requires directors, managers and technical staff to undertake administrative responsibilities, which limits effective effectiveness workload management for their core areas of responsibility. The third position is a payroll and benefit administrator. Over the past fifteen years, the county has seen an increase in full time staff of thirty four percent and an increase in levy of fifty seven percent with the same complement of staff in both finance and H R. A dedicated payroll benefit administrator will position the corporate services team to implement a seamless staff onboarding procedure, provide a single point of contact for staff for all payroll, benefit and pension requirements. This position will also manage the ongoing increases to the benefit and pension administration along with all claims management. This would then position corporate services to implement uh necessary efficiencies, cost saving initiatives and provide the ability for long term forecasting and planning. The fourth position, a business solutions and G I S supervisor is to assist with recognizing success through the digital transformation working group. This position will be dedicated to the task of resolving existing business solution issues as well as coordinating closer collaboration among the five partners on new so solution implementation. Currently, there is no central resource uh to identify and drive digital collaboration across the five partners. This leaves each business unit responsible for solution implementation, which creates resourcing challenges during implementation and onwards. After the county's completion of the uh recent paramedic service master plan, it was identified that the paramedic service is in need of supervisor positions and more importantly, have been identified. I believe it's the only eastern service that does not have them and an additional administrative assistant. The twenty twenty four draft land ambulance budget includes two supervisors budgeted for a nine month period at a cost of two hundred and forty thousand dollars and one admin assistant budgeted for a six month period, which is fully funded by the community long term care funding. Uh, it's important to note that all the land all and land ambulance expenses are fifty percent funded by the province starting in the following year. So the two supervisor positions have a levy impact in twenty twenty four of two hundred and forty thousand dollars. These same two positions in twenty twenty five would be a levy impact of two hundred and ten thousand and twenty twenty six, when we would be receiving a full twelve months worth of funding would be a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. It is anticipated that the new uh admin assistant position, once implemented, uh will be shared fifty percent land ambulance, fifty percent community paramedicine and therefore uh the fifty percent land ambulance portion will start to impact the levy in twenty twenty five. Next slide, please. Catch up items are items such as loss of funding, the end result of phasing in of new positions or programs or utilizing reserves uh to cover operational items. Twenty twenty two, we budgeted for one debenture payment and due to not requiring our debenture monies until later in the year, our first payment was not due until twenty twenty three. It was decided at that time to move those allocated monies to the twenty twenty three budget to help offset a full year's worth of debenture payments in twenty twenty three, therefore leaving the gap of three hundred and sixty five thousand for twenty twenty four. Another large loss similar to the debt payment, three hundred and forty seven thousand dollars of twenty twenty two O C I F funding was not utilized in twenty twenty two and transferred to twenty twenty three structure projects, again leaving this gap for twenty twenty four. Uh, other losses of funding included here are the decreases previously noted uh with O C I F and O M P F. Also, the E or N cell gap funding has been removed from the budget and the decreased access to safe restart funding, which has been used uh to phase in new positions and or programs. Next slide, please. Reserves and reserve funds are funds that have been set aside to meet future funding requirements established by council legislation or agreement. Reserves and reserve funds are a critical financial tool for increasing sustainability and Reserves and reserve funds are a critical financial tool for increasing sustainability and flexibility while reducing vulnerability. They provide options to respond to unexpected um, issues, phase in funding impacts over time, as well as re, reduce reliance on debt. With the transfers to and from reserve included within the draft budget, it is anticipated at this time the county will end two thousand and twenty-four with approximately seven point four million in reserves. Of this balance, just over four million is for committed projects and or purchases. Next slide, please. As the C I O mentioned, the county currently uh, does not collect revenue from the tax base to directly fund a capital plan. Over the next ten-year period, Halliburton's capital demands will total approximately seventy-three million dollars. The county currently has a total of four point three five million within the base budget to address these needs. This annual base budget amount with an annual three percent increase over ten years would equate to approximately fifty-four million, creating an infrastructure gap of potentially nineteen million dollars. To begin to address the shortfall and mitigate future significant tax rate increases, staff are recommending that council consider the introduction of a specific tax levy dedicated to building a sustainable capital reserve to address the county's future infrastructure needs. We've identified on this chart, um, a dedicated one percent levy starting in two thousand and twenty-four would contribute to a sustainable capital reserve total of uh, three point two million over the next ten years. This one percent would be over and above the identified seven point eight one percent tax rate increase being presented today. Next slide, please. It's important to recognize how the decisions made within the two thousand and twenty-four budget process impact the following years. Staff have utilized reserves along with phasing in new positions in an effort to reduce the required um, levy ask in two thousand and twenty-four. Known items that should be brought to council's attention for potential impacts in two thousand and twenty-five and beyond are included on this slide. There are nearly four hundred thousand dollars in identified items that, that would affect the operating budget in two thousand and twenty-five. I also note here, um, there currently is no sustainable structure budget within the county's base, base budget, which is a goal that should be worked towards in two thousand and twenty-five. There's approximately six hundred thousand dollars in the structure reserve to assist with the identified almost one point two million that will be needed for structures in two thousand and twenty-five. This program used to be fully funded by federal and provincial government grants, um, which has been drastically decreased over the years. I've also noted here that there may be further potential impacts based on library transfers from reserves if they choose to fund any operational items um, from reserves with the opening of the Dorset branch. Next slide, please. Here I wanted to provide a comparison for council. Uh, we've plotted the two thousand and twenty-two tax rates for all of our E O W C members. We are using two thousand and twenty-two data as two thousand and twenty-three will not be available through the ministry until about mid-year this year. As you can see from this slide, even with the proposed two thousand and twenty-four increase of seven point eight one percent, the county will still be the second lowest tax rate of all the E O W C group as compared to their two thousand and twenty-two rates. Next slide, please. Uh, in conclusion, economic and fiscal impacts have created significant budget pressures. Ones that are not just seen uh, by the county of Halliburton as there's higher than normal tax rate increases being reported across the province. These increases are being driven in part by a combination of excessively high inflation rates, decreases in government funding and aging infrastructure. This has been seen within the draft budget presented today with ninety-three percent or one point nine million of the levy increase being comprised of inflation, catch-up items and increased transfer payments to other entities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Worship, I'd just like to, like, one last call before uh, we hear from council. I think it's important that, as you can appreciate, I, I want to thank Andrea and her team for the amount of work they've put in the last couple of months because when I came in, as, as great as every system was, I kind of flipped them on its head uh, on them. Um, I think for the betterment, but I mean, their ability to, to react to that and produce a document seems day in roughly two months i- is quite an incredible feat. So I'd like to recognize the work done by Andrea and her team as well as the directors.
Well, and before I ask for questions, just to, you know, to, to mirror what our C I O was saying, I really would like to thank all of the staff for their hard work. And I know that there's have been some changes made, a different approach, and, and you have all um, you've all moved forward smoothly given that change and, and, and I know that it's been a difficult task. So I, I thank you on behalf of council. It's truly appreciated. So we'll go to council for questions, comments, concerns. You're moving to pass the budget?
No, I'm just. Well, I can tell you, I'm, I'm quite impressed by it. I can say that. I think it's a
Excuse me.
A fresh approach and uh, it's sure nice to get the paper that you can look at and real, and rationalize a bunch, other than a bunch of figures. I think it's a very good way of doing it, really. Sure, I, I will have questions later on, I think, when we get a little farther into it. But uh, we haven't had a whole lot of time to look at this, so. I'm a little slower than I used to be, so there you go. We will have questions.
Specific concerns at this point in time? Counselor Carter.
Well, as Counselor Ferry said, we, we, we were preparing for Roma and then got home from Roma last night and then, you know, really only had a chance to, to start looking at the budget last night. Um, I have a, a couple of questions and just, you know, the new format, which is great. Um, but if we, if, as an example, on the page fourteen of the uh, the summary report, just trying to understand the graph. I'm usually pretty good with math, but I'm having some difficulties with that graph. Just if you could explain what it, what it does is how, and how it's derived.
The um, total tax levy or the property taxes?
The property tax and then splitting it down into the various departments. Like, how do you, how do you decide that transportation is nine point nine and health is four point eight and so on?
Sorry, it took me a minute to pull that up. Um, so that, the total uh, levy ask of just over twenty-three, so two, twenty-three point six million, that is how it's broken out, the monies for each division, what they need to have a, a net zero budget. So that nets the expenses for those departments. That's their portion of the levy.
That's their portion of the levy based on, on what you've included in the budget?
Correct. Currently, what's uh, yeah, the net revenue and expenses that they, for each division uh, within the two thousand and twenty-four budget right now, that is what would be required from the levy for each one of those.
Okay. Can I go on?
Yes, absolutely.
So um, just one thing, I, I know you, you noted for two thousand and twenty-five that the O M P F funding will be the hundred and twenty-six thousand. Um, the O C I F funding, which we had the decrease of fifteen percent, fifteen percent is the maximum that the government will reduce it by based on their, so I'm assuming that in our formula or of how they divvy up this O C I F funding, we sort of don't match up to, you know, in, in terms of how they want to distribute the money. So I'm assuming we'll have another fifteen percent situation in next year.
Um, if I might, your worship, I, I wish I'd applied that level of logic to it, counselor, uh, but I can't. Um, it's been fifteen percent year over year the last two years. Um, but it's not a consistent, I think Prince River County was down nineteen percent. Um, some were, I mean, I think it was Prescott Russell was down one percent. Um, so it's, we just, we're anticipating it's going to be a, a further fifteen percent decrease, but that's just our, our, our best estimate based on history and that, that we anticipate it'll be going down again. Um, and then we're trying to adjust for that going into twenty-five and beyond as, as a decrease, so.
Yeah, the, the minister spoke that fifteen was the maximum. That, I can only tell you what, what the minister said. So, but, but it, it, it is apparently based on a formula. So if we're, if, you know, chances are, we could have been twenty-five or thirty, but if fifteen is our max, I'm assuming that we're going to continue to get that fifteen, which would add more to your two thousand and twenty-five uh.
Yeah, if I might, yeah. So we were anticipating that. Un, unfortunately, from our perspective, we aren't given that level of detail from the province.
No, no.
Right? And, and I'm not, uh, I'm not questioning your, questioning your question. It's just, yeah, so we're anticipating going forward, our planning is having that continue to reduce over time.
Yeah, it, it's just it wasn't in your, the, the highlights of the two thousand and twenty-five and um, the other one at page twenty-three on the budget summary report on the total of the net operating surplus deficit. I assume that should be the difference between the revenue total and the expense total. And it isn't, so I'm, I don't know if I'm missing something or if it's just a, a typo or.
I think you, I think you have found a typo. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so that's fine.
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear what your response was, Andrea.
I said, I think he found a typo, so we'll correct that.
Good work, given the short period of time to review.
Yeah. There's a lot of pages. In the typo category of uh, the page forty-four, which is the, the county historic budget comparison by budget year, the dice art page is blank, it didn't type out.
Sorry, what, what page are you on?
It's page forty-three of our agenda. It's the, these county historic budget comparisons.
Oh, of the detail.
Okay, dice art. Dice art looks particularly good, but it's very snowy or something. It's, so, so I, I didn't, so just to include that. The other thing that um, one of the projects that, that we had, that we said that we would at least be investigating is transportation. Uh, and there doesn't seem to be anything in the budget for that at all.
No, we, we did not include a budget line for that, but there are reserve monies, so if
No, I understand that.
If council chooses to move forward with that, we can uh, throughout the year, we, we can use reserve or if council wishes I include something in the next draft uh, for transportation, I can do that also.
Well, I, you know, I think it should certainly be there.
If, if I want, just to build on uh, Ms. Robinson's response, so generally, it's been my practice when dealing with pilot projects or, or, or initiatives such as this where we haven't quite yet committed to it, is we handle it in this fashion and we would deal with it through reserves and then build into the budget once, because we don't want to, pardon me. I mean, we're trying not to uh, create an increase in the levy um, on, on a pilot, right? Project, because it was, but we can do, take council direction, that we can build a line item into the budget for it um, as we, as we move forward.
Yeah, I, I just, I come from the budgeting world without a sight out of mind. And uh, so if there's not at least a placeholder there, um, even though the monies would, I know we have the whatever, hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars worth of reserves that are available to be able to put to it. It, I think it should, I mean, you know, we've got, we've got, you know, the details down of, in the, the roads department of, you know, filling gopher holes, you know, so like, it should at least, there should be at least a placeholder that, or something like that.
Once again, worship through to Counselor Carter, yes, we, we can do that. One of the project, the aspects that is a little bit different in, in the format going forward is with the integrated business plans or work plans we're going to develop. So things, so things don't go out of sight out of mind. So the, the, the actual project itself would be identified in Mr. O Bell's work plan. And then we've reported on it as such going forward. And the resource for that would be identified, either be a reserve draw or whichever is part of the work plan council will see in about a month. Um, but, but again, once again, whatever council's comfortable with going forward, um, we fully anticipate the direction of council prior to this going forward, the tragedy piece, and it will be built into our work planning program. But if, if, if we can't, we can actually throw, show, excuse me, show a flow-through of reserve draw expenditure line item if that's, if that would be, be better for council in that fashion.
Sure, it would certainly be better for me. Um, but I, you know, it's similarly the short-term rentals, this whole idea of us here at the county level being the appeal process and so on. You know, again, that's, there's, theoretically, it's all going to be net zero, but the thing is, is there's going to be money spent in the, the budget and then revenues that are derived to pay for those appeals, so. But it should, I think, at least be there because it's work, right? And it's just a matter of, the other question I had was on a, a revenue was the ambulance charges to patients. Who gets that?
Um, that, the question should be directed to Mrs. Robinson.
We'll keep that direct.
Actually, we'll
Yeah, just from a process standpoint, if I might, um, as Ms. Robinson was the presenter, if there's a specific departmental question, we'll bring the director up and let them answer the specific question. So if, if, if the chief wants to come up and, and take the microphone to answer Counselor Carter's question, please.
Uh, I guess maybe what we need to hear is what, what you envision as a process going forward. Like to, how much are you going to drill down on each department? Um, what, what do you see as the process going forward or whether there is going to be opportunity for staff presentations or specific, you know, opportunities for questions to, as opposed to add a block? Bringing somebody up, I guess we, I'd just like to hear from you on that, or council would like to hear from you on that.
I, I think from, 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 from my perspective, the general piece is presenting the budget and looking at the budget in its totality as, as an overarching document with respect to where the money goes in, in certain tranches. Um, we attach all the detailed information to the documents for council. Um, and, and two things happen is that if coming out of today, which was solely meant as an introductory meeting in, into the budget, we'll go away with areas of questions or areas of things council want brought, we'll bring those back to the next meeting specifically. Um, it was not my intention uh, to bring forward a detailed departmental review of everything the department does, just in interest of department's time and also council's time in doing the budget, but respond to questions or areas going forward. Um, and then we will all summar, summarily, summar, similarly deal with any requests for reduction. We would go back and find areas to, to reduce total levy and come back and present what those are and, and also the, both the vertical and horizontal impact on, on operations by those changes. Uh, so that was kind of the intention. Um, if, if, if council would like to see something different, we can accommodate that. But that's, was, was kind of the goal going forward, was focus on the questions from council. Uh, again, appreciate the short period of time they've had to look at it today. But as we go into the next meeting, field questions during the, the time in between the meetings, address as best we can. Um, and then present the required, the, the requested information at the subsequent meetings.
Any thoughts from council on that? Is that satisfactory? So, Counselor Carter?
So I, I just find the overall levy increases too high. Um, and I understand that there is other things that, that perhaps need to be added, need to be done. Um, you know, there's a, there's a couple of areas that I think need to be reviewed and looked at, and there's some room, I think, for reductions. Um, but we can do that by department at a subsequent meeting or however we want to proceed.
But you do need to identify where you, uh, where you believe those areas of reduction can take place or what specific, a little bit more specifically in this environment.
Fine, I'm ready to discuss some of them, but it just comes down to
I think that's what, that's, that's what you're looking to hear.
Hundred percent, yeah. So if any questions council has today, in between the meetings or at the next meeting, we'll provide whatever detail. Um, our thought process has Our thought process as to the inclusion, our thought process by the impacts of modification to it for council's information.
My only concern about that is is I I believe that when we're discussing the budget, if there are discussions taking place about reductions or additions, they need to be held here. As opposed to, you know, someone calling you and saying, well, you know. And and you making an effort on 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 work that the body of council doesn't necessarily agree with.
Just to, just to act, so our intention, if we do receive information between meetings, that information is shared with all of council, and will be reported at the subsequent meeting, it's not a one-on-one conversation, it's it's more like input of of request and then dissemination to the to the total group.
Go ahead, Councilor Carter, oh, I'm sorry, before we come to you, we'll go to Councilor Fury.
Well, I know this would be, will be construed the wrong way, but I I can't quite understand the library budget. We've got the two largest municipalities with the largest distances with one library. We've got one with three and one now with two, which we reduced to one. My question is, I know how important libraries are. They're the education process for all of us. And I support them. But on the other hand, when we're getting around up at one point three million there and we're looking after the buildings. I would like to know if we can research the per capita per book or some some formula where we look at another area to see if we're somewhat in the ballpark. Because that's a, that's a big dollar and I I know it's going to be construed and I'm going to be kicked down the road on it, I'm getting used to being kicked, by the way. And quite frankly, I'm not questioning that there's anything wrong, I'm just questioning how we stack up with others, and are we looking for any reduction in the number of? Because every time you have a building, you have staff. And that's what's driving that project, so. That's what I'd like to have investigated.
Specific to libraries, before we get back to you, Councilor Carter, the the one thing that I did hear from from you, Andrea, was the idea of of transferring money from reserves for operational purposes, and I I don't think that that's the approach that we normally would take, or nor do I think that we shouldn't be doing that. That is my understanding, transfer from reserves is for capital purchases.
That's correct.
Worship if I might. Two things with respect to the library, Ms. Brown is here to speak specifically to the library's ask at both levels, the initial ask, additional ask. As 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 Ms. Robinson noted before, the library's initial point is, we're required by law to support the libraries. We can have questions with respect to the quantum of the ask, we are not permitted to direct the library how to spend their money, we can make recommendations, we can make suggestions on on things of that nature. So that's part of the the let the process we're having dealing with the library boards. And we'll, I'm assuming Ms. Brown will take council's concerns back to her board with respect to things like like operational matters of how they use reserves going forward, as well as Counselor Fury's question with respect to the amount of money being put, spent across the county on library services, so.
And and how it sort of evens out across across the county for each of the four.
That's, that's correct.
Councilor Carter?
So. I have a library card and I am a supporter of the library. However, I'm willing to be kicked along with Counselor Ferry. You know, the, I think the budget increase for the library is ten point ten point one four percent, and that actually is more than that because of the way that the reserves were were handled, so that the number year over year is 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 substantially more than that, I think that the library needs to look at back to the people. You know. Is there a way to reduce the amount of staffing that is in the buildings at any one point in time? You know, are there some other ways of looking at? You know, I hate to be saying, you know, to reduce hours or to reduce whatever, but the point is, is that when we're at the numbers that we are at, and that, and these numbers don't include all the numbers that are coming from the various municipalities to run and maintain the buildings. We are spending you know, what probably close to two million dollars on the libraries, which is, you know, a hundred dollars a citizen almost. And there are other things that we need to be spending on. You know, everybody has their their interests, whether it be, you know, recreational facilities or sports facilities or roads or whatever. And so we just have to make sure that the, there's not a disproportionate amount going to this this one sector, because we have to, at the end of the day, balance the 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 needs of the community with, you know, what we can afford to spend. And a seven point eight or whatever the number is increase in taxes is really is really difficult to to swallow at this time.
I I would say with respect to the libraries. I I do, you know, it's been an argument for a long, long time about about how the funding has been distributed across the four lower tiers and the levels of service in the four lower tiers, that's one discussion. But I I do want to say that the libraries have an extraordinary capacity for other community services, and I think we have to remember that it's not just a matter of 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 books, whether they be hard copy books or, you know, you know, online books or or audiobooks. There there are so many more things that that the library service does do. Now, where that happens is a discussion that can that can take place, but I mean, no, just recently at the at the conference that we attended, I mean, we heard about the transfer of of Service Ontario to different locations, and one of the suggestions was, well, why can't they go to the libraries, and that's another thing. So I think, all I'm saying is that in our discussion about libraries, and I know that that is by some considered to be a soft service in in certain aspects when you compare it to trying to repair roads. But it's it's an important service, and and it's, I think it's much more involved and complicated than than a lot of people look at it as simply a library. So I just want us to keep that in mind, that, you know, that there are other services that they're supporting. Whether they should be or not, the fact is that they are. And that entails a a fair bit of work, that's just my little library speech, sorry. Councilor Daye?
Thank you, yeah, and as you know, I'm a huge supporter of of the library service. Having said that, I think your questions are are very, very good, and certainly not kick worthy, and I I certainly will not speak for Ms. Brown. But I believe, and she can absolutely let us know when she comes to the podium, that there are standards of practice which actually do help library boards figure out, okay, how many books per per number of people in in the general population in a particular radius from around the library? These things have all been, have been calculated, and there are certain standards of practice that I think municipalities try to to work towards, or can at least measure themselves against. I don't believe those statistics are in the presentation that that we see today, because I, having looked at it in advance. But I think there are answers to those questions in in short, and and so it's just a question of of hearing what they are so that we've got the right information to, you know, to have the good conversation on. And and very much in agreement with everything you've you've said, Warden, about about the library services. I have one other point on 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 a new subject, but.
You have the floor.
That's all right. Lots of budgetary pressures this year, most of which we can't control, and so I do applaud staff for being gold and suggesting that we put in a capital reserve starting this year regardless of those pressures, I think that's absolutely necessary, the the numbers that you've presented regarding our capital expenses upcoming in in the coming decade decades. They're sobering, to say the least, and to to suggest that even a three percent increase towards a reserve would not cut it, and yet you're only suggesting that we go up one percent for the first year. I think that's really balanced, and I'm very, very supportive of that proposal. I I do have a question on on that, though, I wonder when I look at page nine, you refer to the criteria that will be used to provide a score for each capital project. At at the right moment, will those criteria be be brought to council to understand them just that little bit better? Understand if they're weighted and and, you know, and and thinking about equity across the four townships and et cetera, et cetera, will we have a chance to review those? That scoring process?
Yes, yes, and so the intention that being included was to give the idea of how we're kind of changing our focus on how we spend money. And and with all due respect to the lower tier municipalities, we're looking at at a balance of need, not a need per community, i- if that makes sense. So, and and but this is fully at discretion to council, how this plays out. So the short answer to your question is yes, it's coming back, it is coming back to council in its totality, as from the program. Council signs off on what the criteria is, if there's weighting applied, and and what's, so that would be a council decision. The 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 theory behind it is to get away from just the projects, and it goes to prioritization of funding, and so the, and this is the burden for staff, not necessarily for council, is that when we bring projects forward, instead of just getting a spreadsheet that says we have seventeen road projects and this, that, and the other thing, you're actually going to get a report on each project, and it's going to talk about the individual merits of the project, the return on investment, the community benefit on it. But also, more importantly, the long term or the unintended, potential unintended consequences of a certain project onto our operation, so it'll identify if it's going to require an increase in IT. Well, that will be part of the decision process, if it's going to increase in the number of FTEs we have or number of human resources, that will be part of the consideration as well. And by going with a quantitative methodology of identifying the capital projects, it it actually stimulates the decision-making process based on need and 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 return on investment to the community, so so yes, that that's the intention behind it. But the how that's, how we get to that number as to what's included in in the in the scoring metrics, where we sit for what is the minimum score for eligibility into the program, is council's decision. And to a further extent, to to let people know that we're not trying to take any level decision-making away from council, even after all that's done. When it's presented to council with, here are the projects, here's the score, here are these, let's council still has a final authority to move those projects around as they see fit based on their constituents, their their local municipality and that as well, so it's 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 more of a a reference tool and a quantitative measure by which we can actually try to explain the value of project. But the ultimate decision is still less, why with council?
And and I I thank you for raising that question, because that's one of the things that I I I wanted to ask about and say that I I really believe that if we're not going to go further and further into the hole and find ourselves in a more challenging position, as each year goes by, we really do need to make some step to establish a system like this. And and I mean, if we're if we're going at it, you know, as opposed to the three and a half percent or the, you know, three plus percent. This is at at least sort of easing into putting us into a better position, I'm I'm fully supported as well. Council Burton, and I think we we'll need to go back to Councilor Carter, too, because you've got some other items to bring up.
Just a, just a question, probably through the C A O, the community safety and well-being plan, and I understand that we are probably going to be looking at a police services board coming up shortly, and I was wondering if maybe we should be putting a bit of money away for that? Or will we treat it much like you said the other one, where we may deal with it out of reserves?
It's my understanding, and I could, correct me if I'm wrong, that the community safety and well-being or that the police board would be supported by the community safety and well-being position. So I don't know that we need to put additional funds into that at this point in time, we may find that we will have to in the future.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, so we we haven't modified the community safety well-being portion of it, it's still fully funded, and that is the role that we're going forward with it. They will be anticipated to provide support to that, but until we actually know what that is going to look like, then we'll build a model around that to see what we would have to, and we'd come back to council with that program, and we've been waiting for roughly about two and a half years for that announcement on on the new, on the new detachment board model coming out of the province. But yeah, similar to the the my response to Councilor Carter on transportation, we're monitoring it and we'll build that and come back to council with how we see it being structured or funded going forward, because there's a number of models we can use in support of the the local municipalities as well, going forward on that.
Council Daye?
Would you kindly remind me about our tourism position, if it's still vacant? If the monies have been fully accounted for in this budget, where where are we on the tourism? Position?
Again, I specifically, so we still have, tourism is still recognized within the budget we see right now, we haven't proposed any deduction to the tourism piece as well, maybe Mr. O'Bell can speak specifically to your specific question, but on a general basis, we haven't modified our current funding model for tourism.
And just to be clear for the the public's information, the the lines that are, or the the graphs and the information that are included in the budget, there's there's something that says recreation and cultural services. And that's library services, is my understanding. Does that mean that economic development and tourism is included in planning and development?
Okay, that's correct.
Go ahead, if you want to respond.
Through your warden, just for a point of clarification, are you referring to the manager tourism role? Yeah, it was filled by Angelique Ingram, and she started December fourth.
With apologies, that was just a brain fog for a second.
Councilor Carter?
Would Councilor Burton had asked for, that was, it was one of my points, was the community safety and well-being, I I I, there is the police services board, but there's still the whole evolution of that community safety and well-being, I think it looks like it's underfunded for twenty twenty four. You know, I I, as you say, there are many things that are yet to be defined in that area, but the thing is, is it is evolving, and we know it's evolving to then then keep your budget at virtually the same as the previous year, you know, that I don't think that that's that's the way we should do it.
If I might, so thi- this is another, this is, this is a difficult one, and it's the same issue I've had in my previous response on this specific topic, because it is a regular nebulous at times, I mean, there's there's certain areas, we're focused areas we're working on, but there's also areas that we're support to, and that, so it's it's at this point. It's not that, so we're continuing with the current level of funding within the budget right now. But when we go back, I'm going to jump back into the the staffing ask as part of the budget. If you're on that list, there is the admins, there is an admin support position. That position will come in and would support myself community well-being program as well as treasury, so that we're actually, we are investing more into it from a support standpoint, so that Mistic can actually spend more time doing the focus work of of the community well-being side of it as well, and have support provided to her that would pick up some of the more, the admin day-to-day work to allow her to to come forward, bring programs together, whatever the case may be, but I take your point with respect to it is something where, again, and I'm not trying to pardon, I'm going to punt past the buck on this, we are monitoring a lot of these things that there's a lot of unknowns on. And as we go forward in, I'm going to tie back again to my comment on our our change of reporting things, that'll be part of a reporting back into council on a monthly, quarterly basis. When we start seeing things come down the road, I'm going to start benchmarking things as in if legislatures change, or if something changes where we need, look, think we need to refocus energies, that will come forward to council mid-year or whenever it happens, and start having a discussion around, well, when do we attempt to address it, do we address it? Mid-year, we'll have a program for that, or are we just flagging it for inclusion in the budget in the subsequent year? So we're not forgetting about things, we we have these on our radar, and and that's why I think it's important as we kind of up our game on on reporting to council, it's not just reporting on what has happened, but also what we think will be a future impact on on both our resource, both human and and financial side of things.
Councilor Carter, could you be a little more specific about where you see that there needs to be more funding for community safety and well-being?
Well, I think the as as everything is is being rolled out, obviously, the police services board is is one of those areas, but there's also the other social services, and there's the various and sundry programs that are associated with drug use and and other other aspects of of, you know, having a safer and healthier. having a safer and healthier community. Um, so there, you know, there probably are going to be some things. I guess what I'm, yes, okay, it's not, it's not well-defined right now. And if we look at it in the middle of the year and we decide that, or we know now that we, we've got a whole bunch of things that we need to start doing, uh, I don't want us to get into a deficit situation. So even if we're not increasing the budget here to into specific line codes or something like that, we maybe should at least put money into a reserve to say that these things are going, you know, there are some things that are going to be coming up and we need to take care of it. Look, the bottom line, and I've got two or three other areas. The fact is, is we're at seven point whatever, eight, one percent, you know? I don't want us to be getting up and crawling into eight, nine, and ten, um, and, and we without, you know, without really looking at the issues. As an example, the other one is the climate change. We've got a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar reduction in the climate change because we've left the position out. You know, we've had this, we've been discussing this of exactly how we need to do it. And I think, um, you know, we have to come to some conclusions before we finish the budget. But that amount of money being added into the budget all of a sudden adds, you know, to the tax rate. The other issue is that, you know, we have speculated as to what our wage increase is going to be. You know, if, if the wage increase speculation is one percent more, you know, that's going to add a half a point or another, or a full point to the tax rate. Um, so I think that we, we need to, we need to be aware that we need to be trying to reduce whatever areas we can, because everything else is, is, is going to be additive. Everything else is going to be growing the budget.
If, if I might, I don't disagree with anything you just said, Counselor, but the biggest problem we have now, uh, and it goes back to my comment about prioritization of funding, is that we as staff are aware of the challenges that we're being faced with, and they, they form the basis of a lot of our decision-making process in, over the last couple of months, bringing the budget forward. Specifically with the things like climate, climate change. Um, yes, we have made a modification too that was with respect to the funding of the specific position. However, we did not decrease the operational funding in the budget um, for climate change. Uh, uh, shorten, save and accept the position. And the, and, and again, the reason rational for that being is this, is that because we are, we have finite, well, I mean, I guess we have infinite access to resources, but I mean, from a, from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, we have a finite access to resources. And so my, and this was from, from my recommendation back to the council is that let's take a step back. We have an opportunity at where we have, we're getting hit with needs in specific core areas of our operation. If we can transfer some of that funding into the core area right now to maintain our base level of service uh, for, for the community at a, at a mitigated tax rate and allow us to take a step back on things like these climate change, for example, and again, to full disclosure, I'm not, I'm not against climate change programs within the community. It's however, from my responsibility, from the judiciary standpoint, is how do we best spend the money we have for the greatest return to the community at a point in time and over long term? And so we're going to take a step back. The community, sorry, the climate change piece will be fully supported um, through the planning department going forward. Uh, the, the committee will still be functioning. The, the, the directors have been challenged or tasked with the findings of the climate change, excuse me, the, the plan have to be part of their decision-making process as they bring projects forward to council, things of that nature. So we're not leaving that. But as we go forward, we're getting into the strategic plan process right now. Now we're going to use the committee, use the resources we have to, and as well as bringing in whomever is successful in doing the strat plan for us, is focusing on things, so where do we fit on a climate change standpoint, on our strategic development, both fiscally and, and operationally going forward? And so when we come back to council uh, in, in, in the new year, or when we're talking about the strat plan, now we have a, like a focused area by which we can say, if we invest X number of dollars, and the same holds true for the Community Wellbeing Plan. If we're asking to invest X number of dollars into it, here's the return. Here's where, here's what the, here's what the worst going to do. Here's the return on what we're putting into. And we can, we can categorically, but sorry, both quantitatively and qualitatively report back to council and, and, and everyone the success or, or lack thereof in moving the needle forward on any one of those areas. So it, uh, and this is a very long answer to your question, but I mean, it's, it's, I don't want to leave anyone with the intention of the impression that we are just the things we don't have an answer to now, we're not forgetting about, right? They are going to be part of our programs and I'll go back to, um, the Community Wellbeing piece, uh, with Ms. Tiffin, is that when she develops her work plan, you're going to see the detail by which the things she's working on. And then if there's resource requirements to it, that will be part of the discussion as well beyond what we currently have. So, um, but our goal was to maintain at their current level and then evaluate over the course of the year and then report back to council as we go forward.
I, I just want to, uh, uh, give Counselor Shell an opportunity if there are any areas of concern that you'd like to bring up now. Uh, because I, I do know that you're, you know, you probably at some point fairly, not long, no need to.
I'm, I'm happy to, so everybody else's, it's, thank you though.
Okay, I just wanted to double check on that.
Thanks.
Um, yeah, Counselor McKenney, then back to Counselor Carter.
Well, I, I know this, uh, statement's going to grow a monster head every time I say a word. But I mean, and, and I know this is not just, uh, Halberton County. But, I mean, I was, we were just down at Roma and, uh, so many big ideas, so much money being spent. I look around, I listen to our great comments here from our, my fellow counselors. To me, uh, our, our healthcare system across the whole of Canada is really our number one priority. And we're talking here about libraries, about transit system, system, climate change. Add those three up with all that money that, that we, that we could potentially put in to, uh, to me, we, we need some doctors. We need some, uh, nurses. And, and like, I'm not saying that it's our responsibility, but somehow this message has got to get out there. I mean, it, it wasn't a good message recently. We got it down there at, uh, at, at the delegate with, uh, Sylvia, uh, Jones, as far as I'm concerned. And I, I just think that, um, our prior, I'm a priority guy and to me, our healthcare system is one of our biggest priorities and we're, and we're creating a budget here. Like, uh, like think five, 10 years ago, our healthcare system where it was at. And, and think what our budget's grown to now and, and, and we're, and our, and the healthcare system. We don't even, like, I, I know we talked about it and, and, and we've, we've, uh, had a lot of discussions, a lot of, you know, not ill feelings, but I really do care a heck of a lot about it because, uh, I got a lot of my friends who don't have doctors, like we all do.
I wonder if the best way for us to address this, I mean, you, I mean, you know that, that, I mean, there are certain responsibilities or core responsibilities that the municipality.
I know we don't have.
Okay. What I was going to say is that, that what we can, as we go forward with our, with our budget discussions, maybe we need to talk about the possibility of boosting the professional recruitment aspect of, of, uh, of the work that we're doing, which would go directly towards, um, doctors and nurses.
I would love to see that.
So that's something that we can put on the list of things to talk about. We're going to take a break and then get back to, uh, because I know that we've probably all got a lot more to say, question. I know that, that Counselor Carter does and that you do. So if we could maybe break for 10 minutes um, and then come back to the discussion.
Okay, we're back live. Just for the, for the record, want to just advise the public that Councilor Shell has left. She had responsibilities this afternoon, so she's left the meeting. And, and I think for, just so that we can move ahead a little bit more streamlined, we will have Ms. Brown make her presentation on the library board so that that can add. When we get back to our Folsom discussion, you know, we'll have heard her presentation. And then she's, you know, you're off the hook after that for a while. Just take a deep breath.
Travis, you have my presentation to flip to? All right, thank you. All right, greetings, Warden Dannison and members of council and staff. My name is Andrea Brown and I'm the Public Services Manager and Deputy CEO at the Halliburton County Public Library. All right, so what's new at the library? And what have we been up to in terms of spending money on? And we purchased a new library courier van. As you can see, we've got on the screen a photo of Bruce and Sean, our couriers. We funded the van from reserve funds this year, and this is amazing. We do thank the Public Roads Department for the loan of the old Sparkle buggy, but couldn't get parts for it anymore. So we now have a courier van to move our books and films and program supplies around town. We have also purchased Jackbox games, which the teens have been having fun with after school at the Dice Art Branch on Thursdays. We have a, an EACF public performance film license that we have purchased. So at a recent PA day at the Minnan Hills Branch, we did a screening of 101 Dalmatians and had over 20 people attend. We've had great uptake at class visits in Highlands East. So we now have classes coming regularly from the Wilberforce School and Cardiff Elementary School. So we have multiple class visits happening biweekly. I was in touch with a staff member working at Cardiff yesterday, and she said that there was a little girl whose birthday it was, and she was delighted because they read a book, How to Party Like a Snail, on her birthday. Other things that we have been busy with this year are radon screening kits, new, new to us collection funded by the Friends of the Library, mental health and wellbeing collection. So this is a collection that we have developed with Barb Fraser. And actually, people, health practitioners prescribe items from this collection to their patients, and they are freely available to borrow at the library. Also this year, we've had new branch staff members joining us. Had some retirements this year. And big news, as you all know, the Dorset Branch is going to be opening inside the Dorset Recreation Center. So lots of exciting things happening this year. All right, next slide, please Travis. We have also invested this year in professional development on a wide variety of topics. So cybersecurity, accessibility, records management. We've had gatherings of all staff where we've come together sharing in-house expertise. We actually have Erin Kurnahan-Burning today is presenting at the Ontario Library Association Conference this afternoon about how to make a website that people will actually want to use. Next slide. The Friends of the Halliburton County Public Library have done amazing fundraising over the last year. So they had author Maureen Jennings of Murdoch Mysteries fame come to the Minnan Hills Branch back in October. And they had 110 people come to the event and raised over $5,000. They also run our book sales in the various branches, so they raise money that way. Both within their on-shelf book sales, as well as special events like for Christmas and at the New To You Yard Sale in Dice Art. And so the timing there, their book sales. And this helps us recycle books in the community and raises funds for the library. We have also been the recipients of bequests this year. Many of you will know Tim Casey, who was on the library board and who passed away this past year. So many people donated in his name. We also have many community partnerships, and they also provide funds for things that we do at the library. So early on provides us with kits, early literacy kits that we give away. And we have a partnership with Pinwa, and they help us fund the Maker Packs that we give out, which is their STEAM learning, so science, technology, engineering arts and math kits, so that kids can, can do that kind of learning at home. Next slide, please Travis. So as we emerge from the kind of pandemic era, we are building lots of momentum again. We are getting out to community events. So there's some photos on the screen from Bookapalooza, an event in Minnan this past September. You can see author Lawrence Hill in conversation with Chris Stevenson, previous CEO. Lots of photos of Hillary with kids inside the library and out. So we're out at community events like Stories in the Park in August, meeting people where, where they are in the community. Next slide. All right, and so into the specifics. So we mostly, it's primarily a status quo budget that we are asking for this year with a few exceptions. So we actually have a special meeting set for tomorrow morning, the library board. So a few costs that have increased for the library. Some of this you've heard from Andrea already about the annual audit process, insurance benefits and cost of living increases. As Andrea mentioned, we increased in line with the settlement that QP goes with every year, or not every year, every collective agreement. So in addition to those changes, what we have asked for additionally, and so this is in addition to what you see in the figures in the budget, 10 additional programming hours per month. Actually, sorry, I think that one is in the, the numbers that are in the larger budget document that Andrea has sent out. And so this is something that the library board voted on and agreed to, to increase. So right now, we, well, previously we had 50 hours of programming time per month, and the board agreed to an additional 10. So that brings it to a total of 60 hours of programming time per month. We also have a request for an increase of $2,000 for our office supplies and equipment budget. Last year, we purchased from reserves several air purifiers for our small branch locations. And so those were funded from reserves, but they do require filter replacement. So that's something that we are asking to be added for 2024. We have just heard about inflationary pressures. And so we, although we are not asking for an increase to our physical book collection, we have requested an additional $5,000 for our e-electronic or digital book collection. And this matches increases in use and cost increases for those eBooks and e-audio books. We have one of our long-term staff, our collections development coordinator Cheryl Sherwood, has announced that she's going to be retiring in May. We're going to miss her very much. So we are also asking to add $500 to our advertising budget for the job advertisements that we'll need to put in. And this is because we don't want to use the advertising budget that we have to advertise for the library, for those job postings. And as well, because she's been in the role for a long time, will need to do a job evaluation, which typically costs about $300. The one additional item that is not on the screen is, in addition to our automation budget, I believe that the, when the amount was entered originally, back in the fall, there was a typo and it was missing one zero. So we are asking that $15,000 be added to that budget line. Next slide, please Travis. All right, and on your screen, you can see a photo of Erin and Tessa and Hillary and Adam Thorne from Algonquin Highlands. Last Wednesday, we had the opportunity to go and see the Dorset Recreation Center in the library's new designated space in the library, which we're very excited about. It is 683 square feet, it's got four nice windows across the back. And the library board has discussed this and has put forward that we have opened 14 hours per week at the Dorset Branch, the DRC, starting from the time when, when we can open to the public. So as you can see, the space is still very much under construction. We have worked with Mark Jones and IT about getting the computer and technology items that we require. We have worked with Library Bound, our vendor, to make purchases for the collection. And we have, are working with Kate Lovett in procurement to get the process going for obtaining furnishings and supplies. The library board has agreed to fund up to $63,000 from reserves for the Dorset Branch reopening. And that is with the hope that Algonquin Highlands will also contribute to the furnishings and furniture for the branch. So that, those 10 hours of programming time per month and the 14 hours of branch staff time per month are what are primarily driving the increase in our staffing budget this year, along with the benefits, insurance increases, and cost of living increase. Um, next slide. All right, so um, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and chat with you about the library budget today. And that's my presentation.
Questions or comments? Senator Carter.
So, great stuff. And, you know, I think as the warden said, the, you know, the library isn't just about going and borrowing books anymore. There's much that has to happen. But, you know, as much as it's a status quo, you've got an increase of more than 10% in your budget. And the other noting, notable thing is that a little over 71% of your budget is stat. And so I guess my request to you, it's in your special meeting, is, you know, it, it comes down to how much can we afford? I mean, how much can the county of Halliburton afford on this area? Like I said, people have interest in libraries, other people have interest in recreational facilities. People have, you know, various and sundry interests for services that we, that we provide. So it comes down to, you know, how much can we afford? That there's, you know, your budget is like 1.7 million or so, I think, total. And that doesn't include all the, the other monies that come from the various municipalities who, who provide the buildings and furniture and maintain that. So it really comes to, you know, well over $2 million that we're spending on libraries. That may be reasonable, and it may be unreasonable, and it really depends. Everybody's going to have their own opinion. I guess my ask of you is to try to say, is there a way that we can, you know, we can do this and, and reduce our costs? You know, is there a way that we don't always have to have two people in the building? Or is there a way that, you know, there's, you know, we, we had, we can reduce the number of hours? Whatever it may be, I leave that totally, totally up to you. But if there was a way to reduce that number, it would be, I think, very important for the taxpayers of Halliburton County.
The, you know, the levy- The, you know, the levy is before the council to decide any changes that we would need to make. If we were going to cut the budget substantially, would either be in terms of our staffing costs, which is always the most expensive part of libraries, to our collections or to to services and programs and that type of thing. So if the, if council isn't willing to fund the full amount that the library is asking for, then as a library board, and there are several you, several of you here in the room on the library board, then we would need to look at what that would mean in terms of cutting operational hours to cut staffing costs. And just to let you know, so we do in our smaller branches, so in Stanhope and then in Dorset and in our Highlands East branches, so Goodham, Cardiff, Highland Grove and Wilberforce, they are single-staffed locations. So they're, you know, if we cut a person, then we can be open. With the exception of we do provide lunch coverage for the person in Wilberforce on Fridays. So there's a second person there for a few hours. And then at our Dice Art in Mindon branches, we are double-staffed. But we do ask that staff deliver programming while they're on their regular shift. So it's not like there are two staff just sitting at the desk. They have to cover each other's lunch lunch hours. And so, yeah, so in in order to cut staff, we would have to make a decision about where to offer fewer service hours in the community or make a substantial cut to our collections.
Do think it would be really, when you, it it's not an issue of there being, you know, too much duplication of staff as as the, you know, I think the number of branches and and the number of people that we need for each of the branches. As you say, there's only one person in each of the smaller branches. And and I truly believe that in Mindon and Dice Art, there really do need to be two people, you know, given the the traffic flow that there is there. I would be asking what what sort of, when you look at programming, is programming equally, pretty much equally distributed? Like to, does say Algonquin Highlands get the same programming that that Dice Art does? Or Mindon gets the same programming as Highlands East does? Is it distributed equally that they get the same?
We try to make sure that there is program happening in each municipality.
Same programming?
Not, well, in some cases, so the Lego Challenge, for example. But we do try to tailor our programming for the communities we serve. So I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we have a number of class visits coming into Wilberforce and Cardiff. Whereas in other municipalities, we don't have those class visits, but we may be offering a film screening in collaboration with the Mindon Community Centre, for example. Or, you know, tech help at the Stanhope Branch, one-on-one for seniors who, you know, have a computer or technology question. So we we do try to tailor things appropriately. We have, you know, a French conversation circle. You know, you know, at the Dice Art branch. So it's not universal, what we offer, where. It really does depend on the needs of those communities.
Some of the questions, I I know that I I have an idea of the answers, but I'm not sure that everybody else says. I I wondered if, how you might address the question of, when you, when you start accumulating specific materials, so you mentioned mental health, for instance. When you start or community safety and wellbeing, is there an additional cost to that? Or is there sort of a sort of a change or a shift in 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 what you keep on hand?
So for the the mental health and wellbeing collection, we do purchase a good number of those titles within our regular book budget. However, I was delighted that the Friends of the Halliburton County Public Library recently agreed to fund the digital copies from that collection. And you may be surprised at the cost that to to have for for libraries, the cost of e-audio versions and ebook versions of those titles. The Friends, so we have community support fundraising to purchase items from that collection because they see the value in it. We know that many people may not want to be seen borrowing a book on depression or grief or, you know, other topics that that people, many people grapple with. And so being able to download and listen to that at home or being able to to read it on an ebook is really important for many people. It also is more convenient in many cases. So, you know, people can listen to audiobooks in their cars as they're on their commute. With ebooks, you can change the font size. So people who, you know, may be older or have vision problems are able to adjust the font size. Yeah, so there are different approaches to different collections. The Friends of the Halliburton County Public Library do raise lots of money for the library and they allow us to purchase things like the climate change collections with titles recommended by Corey McKay and the Green Burial recommendations from the Green Barrow Society Group. So it it depends. Sometimes we purchase things within our regular collections budgets and other times we do go out and, you know, ask the community for money. So the Rotary Group has, for the last couple of years, funded our Canopy Digital subscription for movies. So that is movies that you can, using your library card, download and watch. So we we do have really great support from many groups in our community for library resources. So it's not just sort of what you see in the budget in terms of our asks for those collections. We do get lots of support from other community groups.
One more question and then we'll come come back over to you. I just wanted to ask about the van. I know that the van was a rather extraordinary purchase for the library. And and there was all kinds of good reasons why. You said that you use the van for transferring books back and forth between branches. I I'd just like to hear a little bit more about the use of the van for other purposes. I'm assuming you use it for programming and structural events?
Yep. So it it does help us to cut down on our costs when staff are, instead of using their own vehicles and us reimbursing the mileage, they can use the 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 van. And so it's been great for, especially for large programming materials that we need to move around the county. So yes, so it does it does get used for programming as well. And it's got a great branding on the outside. So you can see that it's the library van driving by. So it's other additional advertising in the community for the library as they see it go by.
Counselor Rayo?
When it comes to the actual book collection, obviously the hardcover books are one category and anything else that's electronic is a different category. And unless things have changed, I just, I just need clarity. That's all I'm looking for. So when you buy a hardcover book, it's yours. So you can send it back and forth as many times until the covers fall off?
Yeah.
Or it loses interest? Would that be fair? In the case of an ebook, however, you only get so many lens, at which point in time it expires and you either have to renew it or you just lose it. So consequently, the more people start using the ebooks, even though you don't want to increase the sheer number, the cost can go up by the fact that there's more of them going out to different people. Therefore, there there's, there's, I don't want to say there's any kind of a growth based on 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 other than just review, we're having a lot more people using our facilities. Therefore, the demand is higher and the cost is going to go proportionately up. Would that be fair to say?
And in, as one of my slides indicated, we we have put forward the request to add five thousand dollars to our ebook budget, specifically because it is increasing in popularity and the titles are significantly more expensive. And they, so we we have many titles that we have access to as part of an Ontario Library Consortium. So libraries across the province pay into a fund and then have access to many, many ebooks and and audiobooks. We also have what's called advantage titles. And so these are things that are specifically requested by Halliburton County patrons or the Halliburton County patrons have many, many holds on them. So we can purchase additional copies of specific titles for, just for use by Halliburton County Public Library cardholders. So, so yes, there is an increasing demand. Yes, we only have, you know, so many circulations that the, when we purchase an ebook or e-audio book, it it's not consistent. Like so, so sometimes you have it for a certain length of time. Sometimes you have it for a certain number of checkouts. They are always, pretty much always a lot more expensive than physical books. But people are using them. So we, you can see, we have not requested an increase to our physical book collection, except for the additional funds for the Dorset collection, which are above and beyond, and it's, you know, a one-time request from reserves for books for that collection, books and films. But because we, inflation is going up, as we all know. And so by not requesting an increase to that budget, it is in effect going down. And we're asking to have the the ebook budget go up.
Counselor McKenney?
You were saying that your budget this year is one point three, or it was?
The total amount, well, the amount that we have, are, will be requesting from the county is one point three, yeah, almost, if we round it, one point three five million. So we do, we do get about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the provincial government. We also have applied for federal funding for summer students, which we'll find out later in the year if we'll be receiving that. We have budgeted in terms of contributions from, like donations, friends of the library, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. And we also have transfers from reserves for Dorset and also to replace computer equipment. And that's on a regular cycle. We put money aside every year and then have purchases that we we replace computers as they get old and that type of thing.
You said it was one point three.
So the amount that we would be requesting from the taxes would be with the additions that you you saw in the presentation today, which is a little bit different from what was in Andrea's budget document. So one million, three hundred and forty-nine thousand and sixty-one dollars. And then just to reiterate, so that will go to the library board as the request that we'll be putting forward to council.
And what, what's the salaries to that? What's the amount of salaries of that one point three?
So actually, per your request, I did put together a document. It's in the package for the special board meeting tomorrow with the salary information. So on our, in terms of our staffing model at the library, we have the library CEO, chief librarian is currently vacant. We have my role. Also on the administrative team, we have a technology.
We just asking for the bottom line.
The amount was.
Oh, sorry, the total amount, the amount for the salary and benefits is. So the wage amount is eight hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and two. Then there's also vacation time, sick time, statutory holidays, benefits.
And how much is that?
Yeah, sorry, that's not at the different document here.
So it's roughly one point.
So the wages and benefits total, yeah, one point one nine three four eight five.
And you said that that request that I, I'm going to get that tomorrow, but.
Oh, yeah, there was the request to put together a report about the staffing model and the branch open hours and how the different branches were staffed. And so that, anyone who is interested, it's in the special meeting package on Civic Web for tomorrow morning.
So one point two of the one point three is salaries. Thank you.
Additional questions at this time of Andrea? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We continue to deliberate.
Yes, indeed.
So back to the budget as a whole and further comments, questions and or concerns. Counselor Carter.
So what we discussed before and and we had Gary's short answer. You know, I don't want to get into all the semantics of this and and get really down into the weeds. My concern is really wrapped up as follows. We're at the seven point eight percent. And if we have a reasonable expectation that there's going to be something that comes into community safety and wellbeing, and we've got a reasonable expectation that we're going to be doing something in in, you know, the whole area of climate change and whatever that that might be. And then there may be a couple of other odds and sods thrown in there. I'm afraid our number is artificially low if we don't at least have placeholders or donate, you know, money going into reserves for for those things. So for instance, I'm sorry, I know you want to get to the answer. But, you know, for instance, if we think that there's, you know, money going to go into community safety, wellbeing, we know if it's not going in in the twenty-four budget, it will certainly be there in twenty-five. You know, assuming the government ever actually pulls the trigger on what they're supposed to do. So, you know, putting it into reserves at least covers us. I'm all for, you know, the same, the same type of thinking that you have with a levy for, you know, capital projects for roads and things like that. I I just don't want to be in a situation where we we say it's seven point eight and oh, in the middle of the year go, oops, you know, we, you know, we should have charged you more. And that means we then end up doubling up in next year's budget. So.
Through your worship, I think with respect to, specifically watching both climate change and on community wellbeing. So with respect to monies in the budget, so aside from the the wages and benefits piece for community wellbeing, the monies that we had budgeted for for operations was not spent. So that's why we didn't increase any. So we actually have, there is operational funding in the budget for the community wellbeing plan that was unallocated specifically last year in the budget. So to your point, I believe that there is money from an operational standpoint to deal with things that had arise through the course of the year. Same with the climate change piece. I'm not speaking to the quantum of it. I'm speaking the actual money, some monies there. There is money, there is climate change programming money still in the budget that can be accessed throughout the course of this year. With respect to earmarking money in in any fashion, be putting into reserves or putting as a line item in the budget, it still has an impact on the number, right? So we're sitting at seven point eight percent now. If we put, just throwing a number at there, fifty thousand dollars in additional money into either one of those, well, that increases our seven point eight number, right? And so that's what we're, that's what we're trying to bounce off. So when we're doing our evaluation going forward, we have money, operational money in the budget for each one of those items, the size of which may be debatable, but there is operational money there that was either not utilized or unutilized in twenty-three. So when we're doing our our evaluations, that that gave us the cushion we need going into twenty-four to accommodate anything that came in in from a programming need in both those areas.
A question for you before you ask the next question. When you talk about placeholder money for climate change and you said other things, when you say other things, are you talking about things like leak, leak testing, the possibility of a future watershed management? The, yes?
Okay, then, community safety and wellbeing and the and the police services board and and things like that. We know they're coming. It just, it just, you know, if we, I don't want us to be in a situation where we, you know, in order to get to this seven point eight, which is already high, that we're just, you know, just leaving a whole bunch of things at zero and 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 hoping that, you know, that they they won't, they won't come to place and. they won't come to place and pass in 24. So.
Go ahead.
Sorry. From my standpoint, based on our review we've done, we don't think we're leaving ourselves in a definite position with respect to those certain areas. Yeah, I mean, and that's all I can say is, so when we looked at is like, we don't believe we're leaving ourselves in definite deficit position, excuse me. But having said that, as I mentioned before, our program going forward, it's it's not as like, it's an iterative thing going forward. As we progress through the piece is we'll be reporting to council on expectations, things going forward that we can address otherwise during the course of the year, as we would with any other of our budget areas. But your points were all taken with respect to future obligations or potential future obligations going down the road.
As far as budget's concerned, I'm a belt and suspenders kind of guy. And it's, you know, it's it's my, it's it's, you know, to a certain, yeah, I defer to your judgment. I mean, you guys are the professionals. You are the guys who are putting it all together. But I have to at least yell that the sky is falling and and, you know, to make sure that we are doing it, you know, as 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 well as we can, and we don't shortchange ourselves in any way. And then in the middle of the year, say, oh, yeah, this has come up, but we can't do it because, you know, we didn't give ourselves enough funding. At one other point, and, you know, picking on both libraries and ambulance in the same, in the same term is a really good way to get kicked, I think. But I, you know, I am concerned, and we we had this discussion earlier in the year when we were talking about this master plan about adding more. Not using it in a pejorative sense, but more administrative positions as opposed to frontline positions. And so, you know, in in light of the budget constraints that we have, you know, I I would, I would respectfully ask that we look at not adding two new administrative positions, but try to look at adding one this year and perhaps one in the next year. And I'm just concerned about the amount of money and the amount of taxes that people are going to have to spend, particularly in light of the situation that we're all going to have in our municipalities. We're not looking at 2% to 3% increases at the municipal level this year. You know, they're all large. And so adding a a large county levy also is going to be pretty hard on our taxpayers.
We do have different roles and responsibilities and and one can't be at the expense of the other. But I I would have asked myself about that. I'm, I know what the report says and I I know what's needed in the paramedic department. But I would have asked, you know, could we get away with one of the two supervisors in in this year and maybe the second one next year? I I was glad to hear, because it looked, you know, from the documentation that we got, that it was an additional admin staff for the paramedic service. And and I was hoping that part of that would go into community paramedicine, and I see that there's a split there. So so I was happy to see that. Go ahead, Gary.
Just quickly, so Counselor Carter and yourself, your worship. So the question you asked is the exact question I asked the chief with respect to when it came forward. And we do have that information, why two versus one. And the only thing I would add from relatively layman's position is that we don't view, yes, there are title supervisors. We don't view them as being administrative positions. They actually are frontline positions because they are on the road. And as Ms. Robbins pointed, we're the only jurisdiction in Eastern Ontario that does not have on-the-road supervisors, if you will, to support the 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 paramedic services. But we do have information breakdown as to the one versus two and how that coverage works out that we can get into that detail today, or we can bring it back. We come back with the other information for council. I'll leave it to you.
What would be council's wish with respect to that? Did he come back for? Counselor McHekney?
I'm sorry to dwell on it, but that's the prime example of what I was trying to say earlier. I mean, the ambulance is part of our healthcare system. We're talking about all these other add-ons. We're really considering them, but we're trying, no, we're trying to, they they made a proposal, then they they need two, which makes our healthcare system a lot better. That's what I'd like to see happen. That's that's my priority. Not all these, if we have money and time for the others, great. But to me, this is a priority.
Counselor Daye.
Thank you. Yeah, when the master plan was was revealed, I do recall, we did have that conversation about it's administrative, but very much operational at the same time. So, yeah, I I would agree. Let's review that just one more time. So we're all clear. But but that, I remember that that point being made. I I would like to take a slice of Counselor Carter's second-to-last question regarding add-ons and things that we can expect coming forward to ask. When the Service Delivery Review Steering Committee gave us the overview of thinking, I think it was in October, a a number of really good ideas were put forward and a lot of good questions were asked. And then we, I think, asked staff to come back with some some more refined details about return on investment, about this versus that, or or whatever it might be. What what would bring the biggest bang for the buck? And I wonder if you could comment on how that Service Delivery Review wishlist fits into the budget or or not.
I think that question might be directed to our CRO.
Yeah, so somebody just kind of came in in the back end of of the SDR review. There, you're correct. There's a lot of really good information put together and a lot of different areas. Some some have implemented in certain areas already, like IT, for example, and things of that nature. But what we're looking at doing is going back and kind of reframing the discussion. And we, and so I have a meeting coming up with the area CAOs where we're going to actually consolidate the information together, bring it back to county council and ultimately back to the local councils about refocusing, reprioritizing where those areas are, because it was such a long period of time over the that process took place, is refocusing our energies, figure out where there are. So I don't like short answers, by the way. The short answer to your question is, we haven't really reflected any of the specific recommendations to the SDR to date into the budget, other than some of the ones I mentioned, I think IT's incorporated some of them in and stuff in areas like that. But some of the bigger questions that we addressed have not been identified because, again, we're trying to figure out where are we going to land on it, right? So we're going to take 2024 and really examine those and go forward. And if it's the relocation of existing money, then obviously this one just comes back to council. We can do some things in the short term, but primarily we're looking at what's it look like short, medium and long term going forward. So, again, we haven't forgotten about it, but I think it's important that it's been such a long period of time, and I believe it actually spanned councils, council cycles that will come back. Hopefully, I wanted to do it in February. It doesn't look like that's going to happen now. But it probably be the back end of February into March, we'll reconvene, come back and have a wholesome discussion on on that.
And and I would think that that, you know, the results of those discussions tied in with with strategic planning will help us a lot. You know, making more longer-term decisions. I would like to come back to Counselor Carter's concern about transportation and and where we stand with that, just to have a little bit more discussion about that. We know we we put out an RFP and and that, you know, that we're landed with that yet. And I I just am a little bit, you know, I I tend to agree that there should be a bit of a placeholder, but if we have sufficient money in reserves that you think that that could be covered in that way, because it's a pilot project, then I think we need to have a kind of a general consensus on on the approach that we're going to take to that.
I think just from a general standpoint, as I mentioned before, from a pilot standpoint, yes, if we go forward with it or with through council's direction, move forward with it, that's something we'd probably adjust through reserves versus actually building it into the budget at this time, just to get our bearings where we're at, figure out where we're going to go and budget appropriately as we go forward. I don't know if Mr. O'Bell has any more detailed information as to status and where we're at right now.
Through your word, hi, we're just in the process of finalizing the RFP and sending it out. So when we get the responses back from that, we'll see where we land. It's 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 a new portfolio for me. I've never, I've never issued an RFP for a transportation tender. So both Kate and I are taking our time just to make sure that we have our eyes dotted and t's crossed. And and I I can honestly give you an estimation as to what the number would look like when it comes back. At the same time, having conversations, making sure we're adhering to our procurement policy with search that reached out to us prior to Christmas to see if there's anything perhaps in that avenue that could support us pending if if perhaps an RFP comes back and the responses are something that are to our satisfaction.
Counselor Dettrow.
Yeah, again, another subject that's along that same thing, and I think Counselor McHekney brought it up towards the last part of last year. And I'm not sure whether Mr. Dyke was here at the time, and that was in relation to the possibility of investigating incineration and whether or not it would make sense for for us to either put together a coalition of people who would be interested in it or actually deal with ourselves. Because that would go into the 2024 budget. Absolutely not. But if you keep procrastinating, nothing ever comes from anything. So at some point in time, we need to start investigating those kind of things, even if it's only the exploratory dollars need to go into it to determine whether or not we should or should not follow up on on anything that we come up with. And that's just one example. Do we have any monies in the budget to cover off those kind of investigative things? Now, I don't know if we would need consultants. I don't know who we would need to just use that particular one as an example.
I I just wonder with respect to investigating incineration, we do have a solid waste management working group at the present time, and that might be the 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 place where those investigations or discussions could take place. I'd love to hear what other members of council think about that.
I've been, I have some very good friends that are very passionate about it also. And they've they've been doing a lot of research. And we were trying to, we we'd like to bring something to council when we think, you know, that we've got some really solid facts and and numbers and some examples that you would be able to get your head around. So there is some work going on behind the scenes big time. They're not paid consultants, but they they're really into it. And they've already come up with some great ideas. And I told them that, you know, the biggest thing, first question is going to be asked is how environmentally friendly is it? So until that is proven, maybe nothing come from from my end won't come here. But these guys feel that there are, there are some other communities that are using these and all over the world, of course, but something that I'm big on and definitely thanks for bringing it up, Sees. Thank you.
Counselor Burton.
That would be covered with the Service Delivery Review with the Waste Management Group, would it not?
Well, that's why I'm going, I mean, because they've they've been doing some really solid work. They are a good body of, of, you know, with with knowledgeable people. And I, you know, I would think that that might be the place for us to start. And if if there's somebody who wishes to come forward with a delegation to us about incineration, of course, I mean, we would always welcome that as well.
I I would say so. So I guess that did predate me. I'm not using as an excuse. I'm just saying from a standpoint of understanding of the program. That generally would be the type of thing to account, which is for Burton's point, that would come back from the the SDR, because there's going to be a number of areas that will require more research and more investigation. Some in-house, some would require, you know, very specific expertise to bring back some decent information to council. So that's what would come out of that. And similar to, while transit is much more advanced in this in this piece, that if we felt we needed to do bring a third party in to do the work for the cost for us, that being part of our reported council would be that, yes, we can fund it through this reserve or we can fund it through existing, you know, moving some existing money around. So we would deal with that as as it as it came forward and was given prior, and depending on how council prioritized each one of those outcomes of of whatever that would be.
Counselor Perry.
Well, listening to this conversation, interesting. We want to add a lot of things, but yet we want to reduce the, reduce the tax rate. So I I know this probably was done, but when we went to each department, did we start with zero-based budgeting? I have so many times in my lifetime watched council take what they spent last year on the simple things like electric or not electric, but maybe paper. And they'll have $1,000 in, they spend 100, and they put $1,000 in the next year. And I assume that we've gone through that process, but there's a lot of money in there when you go do that.
Yeah, so we don't actually adhere to a zero-based budgeting process, but we kind of get where you're going. So one of the things that I asked the directors to do, and 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 Ms. Robinson gave us the actual number that we actually have already pulled out of the operations budget already. So we do things like we looked at areas over a three- to five-year cycle, areas of chronic underspend, to your point. Like if we put $5,000 in column A and it's been there for five years, you overspend $100, well, we reduce that back to what the actual spend was. So we eliminate chronic underspend. We also look at areas of chronic overspend, right? Because you're not saying anybody do this here, but I've seen it before. We're actually did do it as a point to move move money around and put them in budgets. But to your point about making sure from an efficiency and effective standpoint on the budget, that that was the first thing the directors were tasked with. Go back in, where are we spending money? Is there value to it? Are we moving this around? I know we did pull a number of things out and we did, it was quite a substantive number that came out of the budget already. But no, we didn't adhere to strictly to a zero-based budget piece because we were already taking into account the inflation and things of that nature on top of our core level of service. And then we also went through more of a, we had a much bigger list of growth items that came before Andrew and myself from the departments that we did actually pare that down quite a bit before we got here today. So maybe Andrea.
Yes, when we first met with the senior management team with their budgets, we were at about 10.44% tax rate increase. So when Gary tasked everybody to go back and reevaluate, they were able to reduce it by almost $578,000 by going back and looking at sort of line by line what you and you spoke of.
Counselor Perry.
We've, we haven't touched roads. It's always a favorite subject of mine. Because it's so important, number one. But number two, is there anything in the roads budget that would be reasonably sizable that could be partially done or could be done in a different manner? Because we got to get, we got to get some real money here if we're going to change things.
Yeah, so on, sorry, like on that front, so we definitely are on reporting, we definitely split out the capital and the operating piece. So the bigger ticket items are generally being the, I'm sorry, on the capital side. So a reduction in those will won't actually have an impact on the operating number. But I think, you know, I'll leave the specifics to to sell going forward. But we have, we did look at those things on an operating side of things as well, because that's where some of the savings came from was was through the Public Works Department. And I use the word prioritization a lot today. And and to your point, roads, roads maintenance, roads maintenance and that nature, from my perspective, is always one of the last areas you go to because it's a public safety piece and our obligations in that regard. But yes, we did look at that and we did reduce some operation savings and that. And that's included in the in the $500,000 number that Andrea presented.
Counselor Daye.
Thank you. A general comment, really, you know, we all have different ways of of viewing a budget. We have different lenses that we use when we're investigating the details of a budget. And 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 there's one lens that is popping up in my mind as we talk about potential cost-saving centers. When we talk about paramedics, when we talk about libraries, transportation, those sorts of things. And the lens that is is becoming clearer and clearer to me as we talk about it is social and community well-being and vulnerability. Like, we've got a number of families who are scraping through on housing costs, who are scraping through to provide services for their children. Cost of living has gone up. You know all of this. But when I put my point in time hat on, I, you know, and I think about the responsibilities that we've got as county council to ensuring that those who are struggling the most aren't left behind. The cost centers that we've that we've been focusing on, with the exception of roads, all touch upon social vulnerability and community well-being. And I just, I I I commit to keeping that filter on myself. And I I'm sure we all are worried for for those who are struggling in our communities. But that's, that's a really important one that I think we need to recall as we move move ahead.
Counselor Carter.
Two questions. So where exactly, when we start talking about the roads and start talking about these capital projects, obviously, the, you know, the the difference between the operational, the capital, you know, affects the budgets. But, you know, you end up having to pay for those roads at some point anyway, whether whether you've borrowed the money and whether it's a capital project or not, it's eventually going to be paid for by taxpayers. So where are we on the asset management plan? Like, where are we on the plan that says this is what it looks like going five years forward?
We're currently working with the 2019 Asset Management Plan that was developed then. We are, there is legislation that we are in need of an update out of July of this year. Unfortunately, due to lack of resources in-house with staffing shortages. It is something that we do, we have included in the budget to RFP out those services to get the update done. So to answer your question, yes, we are still using the older 2019 plan, and we are due for an update and an update with our numbers, I believe, and maybe Sill can correct me if I'm wrong. We have just recently had updated road study, bridge study, and building studies. So we have all of the data ready to go to feed into the new asset management plan.
That, you know, obviously, that's the thing when we start looking at a special levy for capital projects and so on, that, you know, obviously, you want to try to even that out as much as possible and, you know, continue to maintain things properly. And so that's really needed.
Yes. So the information within the summer report today was based off of the 2019 plan. Council will see an updated plan this year to help make decisions going forward from there. I do want to note, just to the capital piece and what's included for roads, the $167,000 increase was a 5% inflation on our roads construction is what was used. And we do not have any structure projects budgeted for this year. It's only the pre-construction costs that we have budgeted this year to help reduce the costs in the 2024 budget to prepare to do the work in 2025.
At which point it'll have to be paid for.
Correct.
This second part of the question is, again, when we get, we get back to things when we talked earlier, as you pointed out, Warden, the idea of, you know, these projects coming forward, whether on the Police Services Board or a watershed council or so on, you know, there we have a meeting on the Fourth of March, and I'm pretty certain before the middle of this year, we'll have some, something coming to council about a watershed council, you know, and a delegation. And I guess my only, the point about the placeholders is, yeah, perhaps we are not going to be spending money on the projects this year, but your staff time is money. You know, and so that's really the idea of, of, you know, why some of these placeholders are there and in the budget and very visible to everybody, because, you know, if we have the planner, or if we have you know, IT or whomever working on these various projects, that time is, yes, it's included in their salary, but it means they're not doing something else. And so that's one of the reasons that have the placeholders from my perspective, so.
Absolutely.
One point of clarification and one comment. So from a clarification, you say placeholder. Are we putting it in budget as an unfunded entity, or are we putting it in a budget as a funded entity?
We took something like transportation as an example, you know, we can say, hey, we've got $183,000 in the reserve, and we fully expect that this will be, you know, covered by the reserve for for this year. You know, as we said, we're going to get an RFP back, and A, it's difficult for us to even, you know, when you're starting something, to imagine that your RFP is correct. And then, you know, you have no idea what you're getting back at this point in time. So, you know, perhaps it is a flow-through of money in and out, or it is something that nets zero. But the thing is, it's at least there and visible.
Thank you. That's awful. So the process, we can, we can accommodate either process. The process that I envision going forward, we're going to do is, is when we leave this section, like doing the budget, and the budget's finalized, is we will literally have, for lack of a better term, our marching horse from council saying, here's what we expect from you during the course of 2023, sorry, 24 going into 25. And so what we would do for situations now, the special projects we're talking about, we're currently right now, they're they're unfunded because we're unsure where we're going with them. The investigative part of that would be part of the work plan for individual departments, right? And so as we report on those going forward, then we'd start the conversation. And so on the funding resource line of the integrated work plan, it would be reserved. It would be identified as a reserve draw without a quantifying number. It would just say reserve. And so as we move forward and we start to get some clarity as to what that would look like, we would bring a supplemental report back to council that would state that in area A, we're now, we need to proceed, and it would be X. And then the approval from council would be A for the project itself, and then the draw from the reserve into the budget to cover those costs. So we're not doing the transaction in this point in time. We're doing the point in the transaction through the work plan piece. Either way works, but it's so that's how I envision it going forward. But we can, whatever council likes from a reporting sample, we can do either way.
Go ahead, Counselor Carter.
I think the general direction is do more, spend less. We got it covered.
Counselor Ral, and I think caught lunch is pretty close to being ready to go.
Yeah, one of the things that that we've been speaking about here is obviously the bottom line, the number, depending on if you look at it, that we're going to spend. And then from that, can we afford to spend it? I get that. There's also the cost of not doing something. In which case, that can bite you in the butt much more than actually spending the money. So in some of the instances that we get, yeah, the number does not look nice when you see it on paper. It is what it is, and it may be big or it may be small. But to not spend that money, there is going to be either very little or no impact or a significant impact, depending on how you evaluate the particular item that's being there. When we start cutting some of the bigger items, or we start cutting back on some of the items, I wouldn't mind knowing what is the actual impact of not doing it. Because then it gives me a better idea as to whether that money should be spent now, next week, next year, or never.
Yeah. So as we go forward, if we come out of today's session and council wants to eliminate A, B, or C, so that would be part of the evaluation. When we report back, we just wouldn't do the cut. We would report back and say, if we eliminate this, this is what happens. Either we stop doing this, or two years from now, we're going to have to add X to the budget. So just from a process standpoint, when we're dealing with at the director and departmental level, putting the budget together, when I was asking for cuts to the budget, my stipulation was it had to be a sustainable cut. It couldn't be something we're going to cut in 24 and have to bring back in 25. It had to have a minimum sustainability of three years. Right? As a cut. So anything we do, we would give that level of clarity back to council, saying, yeah, if you do this, here's what we think or our best assumption will be, it could, to your point, we could pay more going forward or whatever, whatever the case may be. So.
Further comments or questions? Okay. We'll, you've heard a number of thoughts and suggestions. Have you? Do you have any questions of us about that you need clarity on, or have we given you enough food for thought to go forward?
I think we have enough to go forward. I mean, it's a lot of good information. We can provide some greater clarity on some of the decisions we've made at the staff level regarding programming and things of that nature. We can bring that back, particularly on climate change, particularly on on transit, or any of the things we've talked about, community well-being in particular. And and we can, yeah, we can bring clarity to that, and then we'll have, and as we go forward, we have probably more information you want to see. We have still have inches of paper that we can bring forward on operational areas based on questions received from council. So going forward, as as looking forward, and and then based on any recommendations from council, we will provide impacts to Counselor Ral's point, impacts on any cuts looking forward, or even if it's a status quo, if we don't do an increase but leave something there, what the impact of not putting the increase in would have to operations.
Okay. All right. So could I have a moment or then to receive the first draft of the budget? Counselors Siri and Carter.
Oh, sorry. That's my other team.
We did shift the order of the budget.
And so be resolved that report, sorry. Be resolved that COA, CAO 2024 report be received. And the budget.
Drop. In the drop. With consideration for input from council.
Yeah, apologies.
And it was moved by Counselors Siri and Carter.
Be resolved that report, that the draft budget report be received and with consideration given to input received from council and be brought forward at the next meeting of council in February.
All in favor? That's carried. Yeah, we're going to be doing it regular budget. Okay, we will break for lunch for, we will have an hour's space.
Thank you. Welcome back to the open session. Just to complete the actions required on the budget deliberations, we do need a mover and a seconder to receive the library's presentation. Counselor Carter and Counselor Burton, thank you.
Be resolved at Halberton County Public Library 2024 budget presentation be received.
All in favor? That's carried. Okay, so we go back to the regular agenda and I need a mover and a seconder for us to go into closed session. Counselor McKecney, Counselor Burton.
Halberton County Council enter into closed session for the following reasons. A, the security of property of the municipality and litigation or potential litigation, including matters before municipal tribunals affecting the municipal, municipality, excuse me.
All in favor? That's carried. Welcome back to the open session. Next under corporate services, we have financial reports. First is the check register.
Our December check register totaled $2,863,263.90.
Any questions on the check register? You're going to have a mover and a seconder to receive it. Counselors Carter and Fearing.
The Halberton County Council receives for information the staff report on the check register for December 2023 and for the check register for December 2023 totaling 2.8 million be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. And next is the payroll register for December.
We had two pay periods in December with net direct deposits totaling $595,113.42.
Any questions? Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive the payroll register? Counselors Burton and McKecney.
The Halberton County Council receives for information the staff report on payroll register for December 2023 and for the payroll register for December 23 with net direct deposits totaling 595,000 be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Next are the preliminary year-to-date actuals.
Yeah, so these are very preliminary because they were, as of last Tuesday, I believe. So our preliminary numbers are showing a surplus of 1.6 million. We will continue to process payments for 2023 likely into early February along with year-end entries. I have identified within my report that we are anticipating on ending, sorry, ending the year within budget. And once all the year-end entries have been made and the audit complete, I will come back to council with the year-end surplus or deficit and transfers to reserve.
Any questions on the year-to-date actuals? Could I have a mover and a seconder then to receive a report? Counselor Carter and Counselor Dayu.
That Halberton County Council receives for information the staff report on preliminary year-to-date actuals as of December 31, 2023 and further that the preliminary year-to-date actuals at December, as of December 31, 2023 be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Next is the proposed tariff fees bylaw.
The tariff fees is reviewed annually by the directors in this year's annual review. The director of IT has requested the removal of anything related to do with the county atlas as the county no longer produces those. So those changes can be found on Schedule C. And the chief of paramedic service has requested an increase in service fees, both in the hourly rate and the meal expenses, and that's due to the recent settlement with 4435 and the changes within that. And those changes can be found under Schedule D.
Questions on the tariff fees? Counselor Carter.
We do, sorry, we do have to provide public notice and that was provided that we would be discussing it today.
No, just the notice, just the version of notice.
Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive the tariff fees? Counselor Dayu and McKecney.
The Halberton County Council receives for information the staff report on the proposed 2024 tariff fees bylaw and further that the report on the tariff fees bylaw be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. Next is the borrowing bylaw.
This is a bylaw that's brought to council annually for approval. This bylaw authorizes the temporary borrowing of funds to cover current operating expenditures such as our corporate credit cards and the overdraft on our checking account in the event we have any cash flow issues.
Are there any questions on the borrowing bylaw? Could I have a mover and a seconder to approve it? Counselors Burton and Burton.
The Halberton County Council receives for information the staff report on the borrowing bylaw and further that the report on the borrowing bylaw be approved.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, the two thousand and twenty-four insurance renewal.
So both our main and cyber insurance policies renew on February first. I do have a verbal update on this renewal since writing my report. I received an email yesterday from our broker notifying that with the addition of the two new trucks that Public Works received earlier this month. There is a change in our renewal amount than what I put in the in the report. So with that said. The increase of just over seventy-nine hundred dollars with the automobile policy that's shown in my report is now an increase of just over ninety-eight hundred. That is the largest increase within the renewal, followed by the property policy, which saw an increase of sixty-seven hundred dollars. We didn't have any premium increases to report in the crime, general liability, council accident or volunteer policies. So the updated renewal proposal that was received is an overall five point four percent increase from twenty twenty-three, which is just over twenty thousand dollars. The draft budget that was presented today did have an estimated seven percent. So those numbers will be adjusted accordingly for the next draft.
Excellent. So we saved a tiny bit of money there.
Yes.
Any questions on the insurance renewal? Okay, could I have a mover in a second or two to receive it? Counselors Carter and Dayu.
The Halberton County Council receives for information the staff report on the twenty twenty-four insurance renewal and further that the report on the twenty twenty-four insurance renewal be hereby approved as amended.
All in favor? That's carried. Thanks very much, Andrea. A lot of work went into your reports today. Nothing on procurement or human resources. So next is information, technology and GIS reports.
Afternoon. So.
Mr. March.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
The report before you today is my standard monthly IT status report, given council overview of the projects underway in the IT department, those that have been completed. Three main ones, the IT digital strategy, management detection and response, and records management project are in, I guess, different phases of their project with the MDR one. Being wrapped up as we speak and made push to get the last computers. Add it to the new new cybersecurity monitoring system. The digital strategy, we, or sorry, the consultant will be presenting the first draft of their findings, or I guess of their recommendations to the CAO group next week. Bounce back and forth, I'm sure for a bit, and then eventually come before council. And then the records management project, which is the joint one between the county and the four municipalities, is starting to wrap, or sorry, starting to ramp up. And we've been meeting with the the clerks group at each municipality fairly frequently and working together to try to push this initiative forward. That, I think, is all that I wanted to bring to council's attention, but as always, I'm always happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions? Counselor Carter.
The disaster recovery plan. Does does the company have a business continuity plan that this fits into, or are you sort of having to be the lone wolf?
The company as in the organization?
Yeah.
It might might be best for the paramedic chief, as I think it falls under his purview. We have one. This IT DR plan does take into account the hazards that were that were identified in that VCP. However, obviously being IT, there are some different challenges that we want to prepare for, such as ransomware and malfunctioning equipment. So we, while it is informed by that, a lot of it is done kind of outside of that, but with input from department heads. And my plan is to bring it forward to the department heads to kind of bring the, just to report on what I what I found and what the the results of the testing were.
I guess I was looking more at the idea of loss of building or something like that.
So in the IT DR plan, the loss of bill, the loss of this building is a hazard that's been identified, planned for and tested in terms of we can get the servers up and running in our our off-site location, ready to go for people to access. The, well, my assumption, and this may be incorrect, assumption is be with the prevalence of remote working, then basically, I guess, even backup. One of the one of the nice things about the the setup that we have between the county municipalities, we could send staff anywhere.
Right.
And they could do their jobs to, uh, maybe not a hundred percent, but pretty close.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Could I have a mover in a second or then to receive the IT status reports? Counselors Fury and Carter.
That Halberton County Council received for information that January twenty-fourth, twenty-four IT status report.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. March. So nothing under economic developments or tourism or physician recruitment. Nothing under medical EMS. Oh, so next, under other admin reports, we do have the a planning report on the results of the short-term rental monitoring and compliance proposals. And just as a note, Counselor Dayu has left a room giving her declaration of the contract. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Thank you, Madam Warren.
Before you proceed, I just wanted to say a quick word of thanks to you, Mr. Stone. I know there's not the like the normal planning report here on this agenda, but I do know that this is your last meeting. You've been, your grin has been getting bigger and bigger as every day goes by. I really want to thank you on behalf of council and staff. You've done a lot of hard work. There's been a lot of heavy lifting and we've had some very controversial files to deal with while you've been with us and you've handled them with with grace and style. You've been giving us lots of good information and direction and and for that, we would really truly like to thank you and 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 wish you all the best in your retirement. You probably all wish that we could go golfing with you. Anyway, thanks so much. Really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Madam Warren, Teresa Council, and I will have to say that I have been truly blessed to work with such a great council over the last two and a half years. We did accomplish a lot and you were very patient with me. Certainly, you had some very insightful opinions, ideas and questions that you gave me the opportunity to actually do do a bit of work, even though I couldn't answer most of your questions right then and there, but you were patient with me. And it the working with the staff team at the county has been a real pleasure of mine. They've been overly patient with me because of some of my reports and them having to sit behind me and listen. So thanks again. I will say with this particular report, I did ask for volunteers to write it. And unfortunately, they all volunteered me. So I'm here here to say that with this results of the RFP for the monitoring service. We did only receive one compliant proposal and but it was duly vetted by the evaluation team. Which that that team was comprised of both county staff and municipal staff, and so we had a good opportunity to look at the proposal in detail and then rate it with a score that ultimately led to us accepting that single proposal. It was well done. Of note is that this monitoring service has has a track record in Ontario and elsewhere in Canada. So they do come with a fair bit of experience. So that was good to see as well. And with that, we did provide some financial information for the benefit of the municipality, should they elect to go ahead with this this service. Of note, too, is that I guess with the the amount of complexity of bringing four municipalities on board at the same time, the lead up to going live, if you read in the report, is about twenty-two weeks. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I I do have to say I was rather disappointed. I mean, I understand the amount of work that's involved in in, you know, getting everything in place. I was extremely disappointed, as I'm sure a number of of those who have been concerned about short-term rentals are in in the timing that it takes to get this going live. I I would ask, and I don't know if this question is out of order or not, it seems that certain proponents of certain rentals are are saying the name of the of the of the company who was the the bidder, and yet it's not on your report. And I guess I would wonder why, if everyone else knows, I mean, technically speaking, I think we might know who that company might be, but could you respond to that?
Well, again, I'm I'm out of my out of my league with regards to procurement policies, but I believe that would be a breach of the process that we would go to divulge any information at this time. I think I'll leave it at that. I don't know, Scott, if you want to say anything else.
Cautiously, I guess I I would just say if you've done kind of even like a tertiary glance of enforcement on on short-term rentals within the province of Ontario, the proponent name, the proponent's name comes up quite regularly. And I would, that would be my belief that people are just making that assumption that that's the the company that was selected. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Are there any questions on that particular report, Counselor Fury?
Well, if I understand correctly, the the term, a term of the service might be three years, so it would be, it would you would go with the same fee over over that period of time.
I I guess I would like to just get a bit of a sense before you take your kit bag and rush out the door. What your thought are are your thoughts are from both of you on next steps? You know, will that, because we did make some minor adjustments at the county level to the to the bylaw, whether that would come back to us before going to the lower tiers. When we might have a discussion on the appeals committee and how that might be, what what the makeup of that committee would be? When the draft MAT tax bylaw will be ready? And 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 what you see as the anticipated schedule for the bylaw going to the lower tiers and being adopted? I guess we'll have to set a date that would go along with the proponents. Time frame. Very handsome.
I'll do my best with the answer, just recognizing Director Stone will be leaving us next Friday as he giggles at me. I I do know the CAOs, the local CAOs have reached out to Mr. Dyke about setting up a a meeting to go over that process about just when reports would be brought forward regarding executing or be given direction to execute a contract with the proponent that would be recommended. And then subsequently, when the bylaws would go back. Just preliminarily, I, from my perspective, it would, if the townships want to proceed with with a MAT bylaw, I think ideally you would want basically a recommendation to move ahead with the monitoring agency, because I believe it's a suite of services, so the accommodation tax would be part of that. Once that's executed or directions given there, we would bring the bylaw back, both the short-term rental bylaw and the municipal accommodation tax bylaw, probably ideally at the same meeting. And you could deal with them then and there. Given the amount of runway that is identified in the report, so roughly twenty-two to twenty-four weeks, so, you know, to use around numbers, you're looking at half a year almost. You would basically have to have the implementation dates of those linked. So basically, when the enforcement of the STR program is going to go live. At that same time, you would want to basically say that the accommodation tax collection is beginning at the same time. The, I guess, the one benefit of maybe the amount of runway that's given is it gives all the municipalities involved some time to, you know, develop any necessary communications that have to go out to educate the public on what both programs entail and get information up on, you know, the variety of websites and mediums that we have to get that information out there. I don't know, Gary, if I'm missing anything there, but.
So for the to to Scott's comment, so I'm meeting with the area CAOs and relevant staff on on the twelfth of February, we're meeting here in Minnan Hills, and so we'll be able to have a report, at least a basis of an implementation report back to county council on on our meeting on the fourteenth. It'll probably be a verbal, but there'll be an update. We can provide an update at that time based on going forward coming out of that meeting.
Is there any possible way that this system, this could move just slightly quicker? I I know that there's an awful lot. I think all of us had hoped that this would be able to be implemented for for the, you know, this upcoming season, which would, you know, supposedly be May twenty, May two, four weekend. And I'm suspecting the answers now.
Well, no, it's not going to be, no, it's going to be, that will be, I've had that discussion at the CAO level, I think it was two weeks ago we met, or a week ago, excuse me. And I'll reiterate that again on the twelfth is that, you know, I I get to comp, it's complicated installation, but I think we, whatever we can do to to accelerate a program, we will do that.
Counselor Carter.
Yeah, I would hope that we could do a couple of parallel processes here. Obviously, you know, the idea for the how we're going to organize an appeal process, well, that can be sort of, we we obviously have plenty of time to discuss that and put that together. Everything else can be starting because you're not going to have an appeal until you've turned down the first one or or something like that. So, you know, it would be nice if we could get this proposal to each of the lower tiers so that we could approve it and 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 get get things rolling.
Right, worship. So that is happening right now. There was an exchange between the area CAOs where they're looking at utilizing like a like a a common staff report that would go to the council. So that information has been shared amongst the CEO. So there is work being done right now. And I think the meeting on the twelfth, and the reason is the twelfth is we just couldn't find a day that all five of us could get together in one spot. So at the latest, a couple of days, but that, so the meeting on the twelfth should be pulling that together, start put some fine points on on timing of two councils and two, yes, I mean, continuing to work on things, the implementation tools that you have. We don't need some of the stuff right away, but at least the outline of it when it gets to council, because the question, the appeal period will come up, at least we can tell when it's coming forward. All the information will be included in in a in a single report when it goes to the local councils for approval.
Yes, Carter.
So your recommendation is to do both at the same time. Is there a I mean, I I I know you just prefer to get that many letters just very fine. But so what what is is that?
I I've been through this before, so the the letters will be, they will be new to me. The only reason I would suggest that is that the language in, and I'll use Minnan Hills as an example, like the the language in the municipal accommodation tax basically is using similar definitions for accommodation and and those kind of things as the short-term rental bylaw, that's directions we we given, we've given to the lawyers. The draft bylaw is essentially done. I I met with the the lawyers last week to go over kind of the last few questions. And in doing it that way, you're basically, you're making your, it's it's just kind of ensuring that the language and the dates are all the same. And that when you say the the STR program's going live, you would also say that the accommodation tax program's going live. Recognizing there'd be some some language in the probably the the MAT bylaw just saying that, you know, bookings prior to this date as an example would be exempt, but that would be my thought just from a simplicity standpoint, if if the local councils wanted to say, we'll do the STR program by law in, say, March. And we'll do the the MAT program in in by law in April. I'm I I wouldn't be opposed to that. Understanding that whenever it goes live, you're you're kind of looking at a probably an eighteen-month window before you really have a grasp on any level of revenue projections. So there there, there's a lot of time that that work can be dealt with, but I would just think you'd want them close together, so the language and making sure that everything's concise and and then your rollout from a communication standpoint is consistent and and very similar.
It makes it, it makes, I think, simpler to do it that way. The other thing is we need to get those meetings as soon as possible so we can determine what our fees are going to be, right, for the for the, what's a license fee going to be based on our. For the, what's the license fee going to be based on our? Based on our 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 numbers here, what our expenses are going to be.
What I would hope based on on the the work that has been done to try and harmonize fees across the county, that to the greatest extent possible, they'll.
But like, for instance, I, you know, the number here for Minden, I think, is is woefully low. But we'll only find that once we start getting the the applicants, right?
Yeah, and I I think even when, sorry, through you, Warden, even when we did the expression of interest, I think, in in the summer. It's it's like, it's a snapshot in time, really, like it's when, I mean, I'm I'm sure they've looked at a. A window and then tried to average. But the the reality is even the the data that I reviewed from the province, it it moves up and down. It's just it's a snapshot in time, really, on on kind of a given day about the number that are available.
Well, and even if we know existing numbers of of short term rentals in, you know, any given municipality. They they some of them may have decided that they're just not going to be able to follow through with it because of the firm and the inspection requirements and.
Yeah, I just think it's, you know, we just. I think we just have to, you know, we have to guess at an upper and then and then make sure that we set up our fees so that they're accordingly. We can always adjust the fees in the in the subsequent year or something, but, you know, I keep hearing from people. I've got five or six on my road and I've got, you know, three. So, you know, the numbers start that up once you start going around the lakes, right?
Council Ray.
Yeah, I want to make sure I understand where we're going. The term, the the actual bylaws themselves. We can pass those bylaws as soon as they're ready, at whatever level of government we we want to be, both at the municipal and. Here, they may or may not be done simultaneously. They could have a small lag between them. Got all that. So because we pass the bylaw, doesn't mean we can implement it the next day. Because if I'm understanding you correctly, there's going to be some timeline, which could be as much as twenty two weeks. Before we can get everything functional to the point where we can actually start. Tracking all this stuff and making it work. So. I'm I'm concerned about the concept of when we pass the bill versus when we implement the bill. That is to say, make it law. And that now, all of a sudden, as of a specific date, here is where it's in effect, and you're going to be paying whatever penalties there are. Question number one, extension of that same question. Would it make sense, and I'm trying to figure out how it would make sense. That while we're in the process of gathering all of these different STRs that are commonly registered. That we start paying, charging or collecting MAT tax from the ones that already have versus the ones that haven't, considering there's a big backlog. Of 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 groups. Again, would that be an effective date to say, okay, fine, once we've got everything in place. We're going to, we're closing in April, whatever date we pick to say that's when the registrations are done. The following day, you're now subject to 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 collecting taxes. Because if we don't do it that way, you're going to end up with some starting into the program quite early. They're going to have to collect taxes, then you're going to have other ones that come in within two or three weeks of that, and and I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to handle all that and track it.
Uh, through you, Warden, and and I may, uh, the the I may request the CAO put his his former planner hat on and and jump in if I'm missing anything. But just for clarification, Council Ray, you're you're basically saying there. Is there a difference between when the bylaws passed and then when the actual enforcement registration? So I believe the way the bylaws currently structured from a short term rental standpoint, and I'm going to just use arbitrary dates here. Say that the short term rental bylaw was passed March first. There would probably be language or there would be language in that that basically saying the bylaws passed, but it won't be enforced until. Date X in the future, because we need so many weeks to get the program up and running. That allows for yourself a testation and and registration and all those things. The accommodation tax bylaw would be a similar process. You you could pass the bylaw in March. But say it's not going, people won't be required to charge it until the date that the short term rental program is going live. Given that the. Proponent would be the collection agency, we would probably want them kind of doing both at the same time. Also fairly consistently within most short term or municipal accommodation tax bylaws within the province. There's language basically stipulating that any booking made prior to the date that the bylaw goes into effect is exempt. From that. Charge, so that's something to keep in mind as well as, you know, whenever it it does go live, there even in the first year, there's going to be a weird lag in. You know, someone's probably going to push bookings so that it it's not charged, but there's going to be a window from when they're passed. At the council table to when actually you're going to say the bylaw enforcement, all those things is actually going into effect. And and that's my understanding probably would be articulated when it it's given to the local municipalities at that twenty two week window. If that can be pushed and tightened up, and I'm, I think Steve, I don't know if his hand was up or Gary's, but they might want to add something.
Thank you, Madam Warren, to the rest of council, so very similar to how we council implemented the. Shoreline Preservation Bylaw, it was approved. You know, in the fall, but the implementation date was actually the following April, so you can actually put that kind of language in in each of your bylaws. Would be the same date and would mirror what Scott was saying.
If I might just add to that, I think in fairness to the people that are be impacted by these bylaws. Is that. Once the documentation has been passed, as we're going into getting it adopted by the by the municipalities. It's also inherent upon us to develop an implementation program where we can let people know that. Bylaws and passes day, the enforcement, the in the act media is here. Educational programs on the application process, education program on the inspection process, everything related to it. Would be part of a document, a communications piece that would go out to the users. So it's not just like we're going to pass it and cross our fingers, but work with the work with the lower tiers, work with the the the. The users of the bylaw, for lack of a better term, that would outline all these things we're talking about, effective date, inspections, those type of things would all be part of that discussion. It's like a phase two of of the program.
Go ahead, Council Ray.
Just to follow up, taking that. Same question, say, okay, so theoretically or actually. We could say, okay, if we want to be fair to this whole thing, we could, we could pass the bylaw. And let's assume for the sake of argument that miracles happen and we can pass, we we can make the implementation date for. For for the short term rental licensing, May first. I think a date will probably won't happen, but nevertheless. Now, is it also theoretically possible to say that once we've got that done, we could now make the mat tax come into effect June first? And allow a thirty day window in order to collect everything and organize it properly before we actually start collecting. I'm I'm not saying we should, I'm going to ask me if that's an option.
Think, I don't think that's what we're hearing at all. Effect at the same time.
Through your word, I that in theory, you could do that, you could say that it it doesn't, you could have a one. Month lag. That's ultimately up to you, it's just, as I said, you would, ideally, if they go into effect at the same time. The the company we're dealing with, just it it streams line, streamlines it, and from a communication standpoint. You can send kind of all the communication and information. Why, I'm going to say out at one time, it won't be at one time, it'll be repeatedly out. But again, if if the local township so choose that they wanted a a lag between when the short term rental program went into effect. And then waited some time for the accommodation tax, that is, that is up to them, that's their decision to make.
Council Ray.
The only reason I'm bringing that up is. When you plan for something, it looks good, when you come to actually do it, things can kind of get bugged up in the process. And I don't want to see anything stopped. That doesn't have to stop, so if the registration can be put together, and we're still having a bit of a couple of problems with the MAT tax. Wonderful, we can just push that out of a month if we had to, only because of logistics and anything else. In the meantime, yes, the the STR program registration is now working. Not that I want to separate them, I'm really saying that option could be there, so we don't push everything out thirty days.
Council Carter and then Council Furry, sorry.
Look, I think we, I think we we need to strive for doing it together. Because there there's no use having one process that lasts for one month, and then in the second month, now you have a whole new process. So if you could put it all together, you know, I think that's what we should strive for. We have one implementation. Look, we're going to have problems, obviously, anything new always has problems when we just work our way through it. But doing them both together seems to be the simplest way of doing it and communicating it.
And just to be clear, for Council Ray, it's registration and licensing at the same time. Council Furry.
Well, two, two things I've heard and I've heard a lot in the last few days about short term rental. But one thing that I kind of. Have to agree with, and I I don't know. What everybody else thinks, but this idea of putting a sign out at the driveway. There's a lot of people that, and especially ladies that. Are alone, don't want people driving in to have a look at what they're going to rent for the cottage, and I think there's maybe a concern there. And the other one was something they said they sent to the county a long time ago. That the official plan zoning by law has to be in step to allow. Cottage rentals. And they said they sent a letter from some legal firm, but I I don't know.
Anyway, you're going to give them a moment to think about that.
Thank you, Madam Warren, to the rest of council, so the the matter of the sign. There's been a number of discussions that I've had with operators and. The sign can be posted anywhere, it's not descriptive in the bylaw. Could be on the building, yes. So, and from an official plan zoning by law standpoint. This goes back to when we first started the discussions on the STR issue. Was that county council, in their wisdom, did not want to pursue an official plan. Amendment or zoning by law amendment, and so as a result of that. The STR bylaw is actually a licensing bylaw as opposed to a land use bylaw. So that's, that's the counter argument, and I think I might have mentioned this previously in front of council. You can rent your house out for a year, two years, lease and so on and so forth. You do not have to get a zoning by law amendment to do that, so.
Just want to think. Just to, just to add to some comments back and forth is on timing. So it is the intention of staff is to move as before, so that everybody has all the information at the same time. And the only lag in time would be just when your council meetings are scheduled. Right, so they're they're working together, I actually think it was Dice Art that shared the staff report. Right, so we're going to have common commonality and language between the staff reports to go to different municipalities. The bylaws, I mean, the bylaw structure will be the same, and so it's just, and so that's our intention is to get it to everybody at the same time. So to your point, Council Carter, that we don't have. Seventeen different, sorry, four different dates going forward on with big lags on implementation, other than the scheduling of a council meeting.
I'm just to add to Council Furry's comments about the signage, I know that I've I've heard a number of concerns about and and had a number of emails. About the signage and how they feel that that puts them at risk, and I mean, in in a way, I I get, I hear that. But I also think they're they're registered. Already and people can will know that they're a short term rental, and if and people on the road know that it's a short term rental anyway. But I think the fact that it's not necessarily has to be posted at the end of the driveway, that it can be on the building. That that will alleviate things to some concern to to some extent, I mean, Councilor McKecky.
This is probably something that I I should know, but I don't know the exact number. But because I quite a few people call me, or like friends or emails we're getting. Is there a set number of weeks where you 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 can rent where you don't? So whether you rent a week or two weeks or three weeks or thirty weeks, you this whole program. If if followed, right?
I through you, there's two pieces to that, but from an accommodation standpoint, the accommodation tax standpoint. Currently, right now, the bylaw states that if you rent rent less for less than twenty eight consecutive days, you're required to charge it. Anything beyond that, you're not required. And I I believe, and I'll look to my my fellow director. I I believe that was basically pulled from the short term rental bylaw, like very similar language that it's considered a short term rental if you're, if it's rented for. Twenty eight consecutive days or less.
Thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of council, that is correct, so it's a pretty standard definition for short term rentals, twenty eight days or less. There has been a lot of discussion over many municipalities in regards to, can we? Can we let people just rent the odd time, maybe two or three weekends a year to cover taxes? And this bylaw was structured. It has to be in general in the sense that it applies to everybody, those who are renting. Many weeks of the year versus those who are renting just a few times a year.
Thank you, Council Carter.
Yeah, I think that was, you know, that was part of our, you know, if we look at where we were on the first draft of this bylaw to where we ended up. There were, you know, a lot of changes, I think at one point we had three tiers of of rental and. But at the same time, we get, then we get into the situation, how do we count? How do we know? Who's telling us the, you know, the truth, so. Fortunately, unfortunately, there has to be a kind of a one size fits all after the only way for this to work. And it's unfortunate maybe for some people, but at the same time, it's. You know, it's if everybody would drive reasonably, we wouldn't need speed limits. And speed signs, so the thing is, is that's unfortunate, if we have to pass a law that applies to everybody.
Well, and it it the risk is there, whether you, the risk and liability are there, whether you rent for two weeks or four weeks or the whole year, so. Think that's where, why we landed where we did. Well, one last question. Is, I just want to be assured that the latest draft of the bylaw is readily available for viewing on our website, it's not hard to find.
It's, it has been readily available upon a request, but I'll have to do a. O D A scan of it to put it up on the website.
I think we need to, you know, make it as easy as possible for people to find it, that and it's clear that it's the the most recent draft. I I've had people tell me that they couldn't find it and they searched and searched for it and. I mean, I personally, the last time that I wanted to print it off, which was less than a month ago. Just put it into the search. And it it popped up and I printed it with no difficulties, but but I I I mean, we're all a little more familiar with the bylaw or with the website. And possibly some others, I just want to make sure that it's. There. Any other questions for now? Okay, can I have a moment or second or then to receive the report? Counselors Furry and Carter, thank you.
That council, the, uh, count, sorry, County of Palabriton Council received for information report PLN zero three twenty twenty four. Results of the short term rental monitoring and compliance solution, request for proposal.
All in favor? Let's carry it. I think Council D U might be in your office, so if you could. Okay, so nothing from joint accessibility. We will move into reports in minutes from external boards and agencies. Is there anything that you'd like to bring forward on the health unit? Council Ray. I found it interesting to hear that the, the merge of the units was being considered voluntary. And somehow I feel that that's not really the most accurate description of the process.
It's a word, you know, it's a word they chose to use. And at the end of the day, that that's kind of sort of where it sits. The, the problem that we had with it, the way it was explained to us was it's voluntary. Provided that your case study does not pass. If your case study does not pass, then you may not be required to, to do that. But they lowered the threshold. It was supposed to be between 300 and 500,000 population. Now they're kind of looking at 500,000 population is the minimum. Well, if you look at the combination that we have at the moment, which would be the H K B R and the Peterborough Health, we're just over 300,000. So again, these meetings are going to try to add more clarity to, to where we are and where we're going. So having said that, again, hopefully we'll have more information for you next month.
Thank you. Next is point in time, Council Day you.
Um, nothing particular to note. I think I'll, I'll speak to minutes and we don't have a, an up to date set here today, so I'll defer until next time.
Okay, the, with respect to the Wardens Caucus, really, the, the most recent meeting we had was just kind of getting our ducks in a row for, for Roma. We did have, I think we'll give you a more fulsome report at our next meeting. We, we did have a, a number of delegations and there may be some success coming out of them. You know, we're, we're getting a, a little bit of information that there might be some movement on the Crown land issue. We're also, there were, there was some definite success in the, in the housing, you know, in, in the push for housing with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. It was, it was refreshing to see his approach was somewhat different than the previous minister, to say the least. I mean, and actually, one, one project that was referred to during the, during the delegation, you know, was, there was an instant nod of approval for funding to assist with the kind of last mile of infrastructure for a project. That's, it's a partnership with indigenous people, which I think probably helped that go forward quite a bit. There was another delegation on tourism and I'm, I'm not really quite sure. I, I wasn't able to attend that. But I'll have a much more fulsome report, you know, and some more details on that at our next meeting. Sure, anything you want to add to that?
No, so just further to the, the Wardens comments, so for the February, our first meeting in February, we'll put together a kind of a detailed summary of what happened at Roma. Who we met was what we think the outcomes are going to be and we'll combine the E W C piece with that as well. Because I think between the county and E W C, I think we had eight, seven sessions with ministers. So there's a lot of good information that we can share with everybody.
I, I will say that the, the delegation that that we made to the Minister of Health was interesting, you know, from a number of perspectives and Council Carter presented us extremely well. I think there was, you know, I might have even have been a little bit of movement there, we'll see. But that was based on Council Carter's work and not so much on the, on the delegation material that we prepared. But anyway, we'll be hearing more about that. Overall, I'd have to say that the conference was interesting, a little bit of frustration, maybe. Maybe a lot of frustration, but anyway, always worthwhile, you know, having an opportunity to speak to ministers is, is always a good thing. Moving on, anything on joint social and housing?
The only thing there is that we, we changed the schedule of meetings so that we're, actually, our meetings are, are pushed into February so that we could get the year end and quarterly reports. So we're, you know, we always ended up having a meeting and, you know, not having the previous quarter's numbers yet. And so it was, was really important. We've on, just talk a little bit about housing. We've had some pretty serious issues on housing. And we had at least one building went into lockdown and, you know, there's been, it's, it's really a difficult situation in, in trying to administer these, these buildings, particularly. And one of the major problems is, is that if you are going to evict somebody who is a, you know, a bad actor, they end up going to court and realize saying they're going to be homeless if they're getting evicted from here because this is already kind of the last resort. And then a judge gives them a stay and it may have taken you 13 months to get this person out. There's also a situation where the province has a shortage of sheriffs that you need and maybe it's not the best job in the world to aspire to, but it is causing a number of issues, particularly since it takes us right now on an average of like 13, as I said, 13 months to, to evict somebody. And in the, in some cases, we're dealing with some very bad criminals. So it's not just somebody who's, you know, having trouble making their rent. We're, we're talking about some really bad actors. So having said that, there were, there was the new program in our delegation with the Minister of Infrastructure. Talking about, about financing of, of projects. And so, you know, I've sent some notes to the housing people and they'll start looking for some of those programs that were supposed to be implemented in the next couple of weeks. So who knows, we may, we may get something that will be helpful to us.
Thank you. You know, just in, in, in the same vein as, as the challenges you're talking about in, in, you know, removing tenants. I've heard during the discussions about short term rentals, one of the things that I have heard is that, that, you know, people have absolutely no desire whatsoever to turn their units into permanent rentals because it's almost impossible to get a problem tenants out. And they just don't want to go down that route. So in finding, you know, some balance there would be, would be good. Thank you for your work on that. Given that Council Shell is not here, is there anything you'd like to bring forward on the library board?
In substance, nothing further to what was presented this morning. The only administrative point was, is that new year, new term. David Orion will continue as library board chair and I have been elected to vice chair.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, next up is the land division.
Thank you, Madam Warren, to rest of councils. What you have before you is the first report of the year and also a summary of our activities over the last year. Of note, the committee met for its first time during the day, so that was an exciting venture. And you'll see that we processed and dealt with 60 applications for the committee last year. All but one was, was approved. And unfortunately, that non approval was appealed. So we have an appeal hearing on that particular file come March. So happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions on the land division? Thank you, Mr. Stone. Could I have a moment or a second or to receive the reports in minutes from external boards and agencies, Councils Fury and Carter?
Albert County Council received the plan report P L N 02 2024 entitled Land Division. I give your report for January 2024.
All in favor? That's carried. CPAC update, anything to report, Council Burton?
Thank you. I, I did talk to the station commander, he is going to send out a poll about a meeting. We're hoping to have it in, I'll say mid February. He's also going to bring in some, some people from headquarters, I believe, that are going to give us a hand and some, maybe some points on, on putting the board together. That was his suggestion and I said, well, I mean, bring them, bring them on.
Did he by any chance have any notion when the, you know, when the police board might?
No, and I didn't get into that. And I thought we would do that at the next meeting, maybe have more information on.
Okay, thank you. Next is E Y R N update. And really nothing, nothing to report other than that we are going to be in early February, having a strategic planning session, also indigenous sensitivity training. And get back to you on the success of those. Anything on poverty reduction? Okay, and under other business, we have dealt with the budget deliberations and the libraries budget presentation. So next up are the bylaws. So could I have a moment or a second or to receive the or approve the bylaw to establish a tariff of fees? Councilors Fury and Dayu.
That bylaw 4225 being a bylaw to establish a tariff of fees for the county of Halliburton be considered to be read a first, second and third time and finally passed and the seal of the corporation be fixed.
All in favor? It's carried. And next is a bylaw to authorize the borrowing of money. Could I have a moment or a second or for that, Council McKechny, Council Carter?
That bylaw 4226 being a bylaw to authorize the borrowing of money to meet current expenditures of the county certainly the corporation of the county of Halliburton be considered to be read a first, second and third time and finally passed and the seal of the corporation affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of motions? Hearing none. Could I have a moment or a second or to confirm the proceedings of council? Excuse me, Council Ray, Council Dayu.
That bylaw 4227 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the January 24th, 2024 meeting of Halliburton County Council be considered to be read a first, second and third time and finally passed and the seal of the corporation affixed.
All in favor? That's carried. Finally, could I have a motion to adjourn? Council McKechny, Council Ray.
Be resolved that the January 20 24th, 2024 meeting of Halliburton County Council be adjourned at 1:42 PM.
All in favor? It's carried. Thank you, everyone.